Good evening.
Good evening.
The regular meeting of Southern Shores Town Council for July the 11th, 2017 is now in session. Before I ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence, I would remind you that we have a number of sign-up sheets in the back. If you wish to speak during the public comment period, which is a three-minute time, you can talk on any subject, you sign in the public comment sheet. If you wish to speak during the public hearing, you may sign up or not, but there's not a specific time limit on that time of your speaking. So we ask that you be respectful of your other people here, but you're not limited to the three-minute time limit during the public hearing. Thank you. Please join the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am not a state senator. It is a matter of public, which stands on my nation under my individual with liberty, state, and justice law.
Thank you. Counsel, I make a motion that we address the ordinance amending Chapter 22 to the Code of Ordinances, Ordinance 2017-07, which, Section 2211, regulating hours of certain alcohol sales within the town limits. The sale of malt beverages, unfortified wine, fortified wine, and mixed beverages shall be allowed within the town limits on any premises licensed by a valid and current alcoholic beverage control permit issued under NCGS 118B-1201 on Sundays beginning at 10:00 a.m., changing the hours that restaurants and other establishments can serve their beverages prior to noon. Do I have a motion to, can I have a second for the motion?
Second.
All in favor of going ahead and passing this?
Do we need to, just a point of order, Ben, do we need to start the agenda before we pass, or is that good?
I think that's fine. I think that the, is the ordinance available for people to see, and is it available for...
Is it out there?
Yeah. Well, I can amend the motion, say I'd like to motion to amend the agenda, and then we'll just go from there.
Let's do that.
I've got two votes in favor of that.
Any discussion about amending the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now amended the agenda, we go, we go in an address, I'll re, I won't restate what I said a minute ago, just ask for call the motion. Go ahead and approve.
You got first and a second, so just ask for a vote.
Yeah. Thank you, Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is made and carried to approve the ordinance amending the sale of alcohol to 10 o'clock in the morning. I need a motion, counsel, to approve the consent agenda, Tab 1.
It's a minute.
It's based on the minutes of June 20th meeting.
I've got one question about possibly amending the agenda. There've been a lot of complaints in town about through, past through traffic on the Dogwoods and over on Seoats and Hillcrest and Hickory, Jennifer, Trenna, Pete, everywhere it seems like. Are we going to get a report from your town manager tonight on what the status of his special...
We've asked the town manager and town attorney and town police chief to get back to us with their observations.
Will we hear from them tonight? If not, I'd like to add to the agenda to discuss further, see if we can...
It's waiting on me at this point, Fred, and I think we were targeting the August meeting.
Targeting the August meeting. It's not going to do as much good this year, I guess next year. Because people want to know what we're going to do there. They're really tired of it. This has been a record year, and it's been a lot of problems, so...
And it's sitting with me, I just haven't gotten to it yet. But the target was the August meeting.
No kidding. So we're going to get a report in August?
I hope so.
Okay.
Is that okay, Fred? Thank you. I need a mo, I have a motion on the floor, counsel, to approve the consent agenda. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion about that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda's been approved, thank you. Moving right along, town planner, Wes.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief report for you all tonight for the month of June. There were 10 zoning permits issued, 34 building permits issued. Those consisted of three new single-family dwellings, two accessories, five additions, one remodel, two repairs, and 21 others. There are currently 23 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in June was, excuse me, $7,033.25. With respect to code enforcement, one zoning notice of violation and three warning citations were mailed. Those included one building height zoning violation, one canal obstruction, and two obnoxious weeds and grass violations. And lastly, with respect to the planning board, they will be holding a meeting on July 17th, next Monday, to continue to review and comment on the town code update project. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
I don't see our police chief here tonight.
He's over in my neighborhood.
He got called to.
At least he's over off a spin drift somewhere.
Okay, thank you. If he gets back, we'll have him later. Ed Limbacher, our fire chief, good evening again.
Evening, mayor, council. For the month of June, the fire department responded to a total of 65 calls, three building fires, five patient assists, 30 EMS calls, four accidents, two with injuries, two without, one search for a lost person, one trench rescue, one gas leak, one arcing a power line down, five service calls or public service, five public service calls, one assist police agency, one authorized burn, one standby or cover-up, one dispatch and canceling route, one malicious call, and four alarms, for a total, again, of 65. Last year at this time, we were at 62, so we're a little ahead of this year. Just a couple comments. Does anyone have any questions on my report first?
Counsel.
No, thank you.
Just a couple comments. July is typically our business month. Last year, I believe, we ran somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 calls from Friday evening, including up until 5:00 today, we ran 24 calls, so typically pretty busy for us. And that's everything from smoke in a building to minor ambulance call. Something else, I just wanted to let council know that our deputy chief resigned due to family constraints and unfortunately his job at Dominion's taking more and more of his time, and he couldn't fulfill this position. So we're in the process of filling that, and obviously that's a vital position for us, so we'll just keep informing on what's going on there.
Thank you, Ed, appreciate it. Town manager's report. Good evening, Peter.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. You did discuss earlier, but the council's directive for staff to list the concrete options to deter traffic on all town streets should be ready and on your agenda for August 1st for presentation to you. The fire department's contract for architectural services with its architect for a potential new fire station is progressing, and I'm informed by the chief that it's projected to be executed this week. And as discussed by the council, our staff has had input into that contract with the fire chief and his negotiations with the architect. On your next agenda for August 1st, I didn't want to inform you that I've been in contact, I've been contacted by Dominion Resources. It is seeking a 15-foot-wide easement in the street right-of-way for installation of a new above-ground distribution line in Southern Shores in the vicinity of Bayberry, East Dogwood, Woodland, and Hickory Trails. It's for the purpose of completing a loop system there in the case of, to prevent down power in Southern Shores and to enhance our service. It is an above-ground line, I'm informed, and I've asked them to please come and make a presentation as their formal request to you on August 1st. As soon as I get the documentation, I'll be forwarding that to each of you as well, so you can review that ahead of August. My last item tonight is, concerns the pond in town that's called three different names, Mallard Cove Pond, Duckwoods Pond, or Gengite Pond. Residents surrounding that pond would like to treat the pond for algae blooms, and as some of you may know, over the years, we've had trouble, or they have had trouble determining who actually owns that pond. And so we're cooperating with adjacent property owners to determine ownership, to help them determine ownership. The town does not own it, it's between one or two different owners, and we're actually assisting with that to try to make a determination to help the adjacent property owners. So I did want to inform you there in case anybody gets any calls. Be glad to answer any questions.
People stated last night at the Southern Shores, that this pond belongs to Kitty Hawk Land Company.
Which is denied by Kitty Hawk Land Company, unfortunately. So, yes.
I just know that this was discussed last night about the growth and everything.
Great, great.
They tried to give it away at one point to Chickahaw, and they found out that it wasn't theirs, so I think that's the...
I think this comes down, again, to a determination of whether that water body was natural prior to development, or whether the development process created the water body, which if so, it would have been described in one of those deeds you're talking about. So that's where we are with that, and we're just cooperating to help the adjacent property owners in that process.
We're assisting them with title search to understand.
Not doing a full-blown search, but I'm working with Mr. Hobbs of Mr. Gallup's office to try to help them make some determinations on that.
Thank you.
And any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer anything.
I had the same impression that Gary had, that it belonged to the Kitty Hawk Land Company, but they were certainly offering somebody else in trade, but apparently it doesn't belong to them. Thank you, Peter.
I probably should have asked this when Wes was up. Do we have a schedule or a timeline on the code rewrite? I know Wes mentioned that they were meeting first of the month and reviewing still.
Let me ask, if I can defer to Wes on that, or even the chairman of the planning board is here, he probably can do that as well, better than any others.
I can report on that during my presentation.
Thank you, Sam. And one more question.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a schedule for mowing? I know we've had a lot of rain. I've had several calls about our grass is really high as far as the right-of-ways.
We do have a schedule for mowing, and the rains throw that off occasionally, and that's what's happened at this point. And we'll be chasing high grass for a while now because of the rains, but if y'all have a particular area of concern, any council member, you can send me that anytime, and we'll address that on a triage basis.
Okay.
Town attorneys' report.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Sam Williams, planning board. Good evening, Sam.
Good evening, mayor, council. Sometimes it's kind of hard to hear you guys if you're sitting in the back, or maybe it's just because I'm old and have bad hearing, so I'll try to speak up. I've got three things I want to, four things I want to talk about this evening, since it's been two or three months since I've spoken to you. The first thing is the zoning tax amendment 17-01. That's the applicant was the town staff, and the purpose was to amend the town code to permit previously permitted accessory structures with living space to be legally non-conforming. Just as a background, I know you probably know it, but some of the folks in the audience may not, that over the years, the town has approved accessory structures with living spaces. Probably most of those are unattached garages, and although the town zoning ordinance prohibited this practice, as of January 1, 2017, the proposed amendment makes these accessory structures legally non-conforming because they had been previously permitted. In reviewing this ZTA zoning tax amendment, the planning board had no amendments, and we recommend that, that it, we found it consistent with the land use plan, and the proposed action is reasonable and is in the public interest, and the planning board recommends approval of ZTA 17-01 as proposed. The, the next thing I wanted to quickly report on for your information is a couple of variances that the planning board reviewed in their role as board of adjustment. And just as kind of background information, the, there are quasi-judicial hearings, and basically the board of adjustment acts as a judge, and we have to approve four standards that were set in North Carolina law, and our decisions are only appealable to the Superior Court of North Carolina. So you guys don't have to act on the ones. The first variance is, was another variance, and this is about the third one we've done, relating to 55-foot-wide lots that were platted in 1949 before the town was incorporated. Now the minimum lot width is 100 street footage. And these lots, these 50-foot lots, may be developed as long as other existing zoning requirements are met, for example setbacks and minimum square footage. Without the variance that's requested, and the variance is requested to reduce the side lot, side lot setbacks from 15 to 12 feet. Without the variance, only a 20-foot house, 20-foot wide house can be built, and a 20-foot wide house is about the size of a double-wide trailer or modular home. So this would, if approved, this variance would increase the ability to build a house by six feet. Doesn't sound like much, but that's what they came in for. The board of adjustment voted to approve the variance request. The second variance that we reviewed was a request to allow a different point of measurement for determining top plate and maximum height requirements. The top plate and maximum height requirements are measured at the corners of the structure from the lowest elevation of the finished grade or the original grade, whichever is And the builder submitted plans that indicated the top plate would be 26 feet, and the maximum height would be 35 feet, and so that met the requirements. When the first required height certification measurement was made, and that's when the structure is framed out, so you can tell where the top of the building is and where the height plate, the top plate is, it indicated that the top plate was 1 and 1/2 feet above what it should be, and the total height was almost 5 feet above where it should be. And the variance was to request the top plate maximum height be measured from a different point. They didn't indicate what point, but anyway, to bring the structure into compliance, the board of adjustment voted to deny the variance request. I mentioned the town code update, just as, to bring the audience up to speed if they're not. The town is in the process of updating its code to make it more usable, and the contractor is submitting his, his proposed changes in what he calls modules, basically different groups of chapters. And Module 1, the planning board was charged with reviewing it. It consists of seven chapters totaling 207 pages. The zoning page is the largest with 105 pages, so it's about half of the first module. The planning board has met several times. We recognize the fact that if we met at our regularly scheduled meetings, and if there was other issues to discuss, that it probably would be celebrating my 100th birthday by the time we finish just the review of Module 1. So we decided to hold some special meetings to review it, so hopefully we can get two in, meetings in, in most months, and the months, the times that we have, other things to consider, will only meet once. The, the planning board has reviewed the first three chapters and are partway through the zoning chapter. That's a total of about 45 pages out of the 207. As I mentioned, the zoning chapter is taking most of that discussion, and I suspect when we get through that review of the zoning chapter, things will go much more quickly. But just wanted to mention that in reviewing this Module 1, that the town council is going to have to make some decisions before things are finalized, not on the overall thing, but on specific things like lot coverage, measurement, and how to measure the building heights. There are several options proposed for each one of those. For example, in lot coverage, some of the options are, keep it the way it is as far as current measurements, or another option is to credit for, some sort of credit for purview services. And something else is not counting the surface water of a pool as lot coverage, because the pool will retain water even during most heavy rains. Building heights, some of the options that were, are proposed are stay with the current measurements, average the corner measurements, because right now, the measurement is from the lowest corner, and there's no averaging, that's the height. And also a possibility of no requirement for a top plate measurement. Anyway, the planning board will make recommendations when we finish the module, and it'll be up to you to make the final decisions on those options. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Counsel.
Gary's got one.
I have, and it may not be for you, Sam, it may be for us. I thought this ZTA 17-01, I'm going back. When we passed the 6,000-square-feet maximum rule, this was discussed as far as accessory buildings. I actually was one that said, yes, that's what we're saying. If it's under the 6,000-square-feet, that accessory building could be heated and includes living space. If it was unheated, I can't remember, but I want to say that that didn't count in the So should we...
What it is, is the current ordinance says that you can't have any living space, and that was discussed a little bit during the 6,000-square-feet...
But I thought we included it in that 6,000-square-foot maximum.
We haven't done that. What was done at the 6,000-square-foot timeframe, when we were dealing with that ordinance, was that it was left alone with regard to the living space and the accessory structures, and you didn't have to consider whether to count it towards the 6,000 or not, because it couldn't be there. But what was discovered was that there were some that did have that. So what this ordinance tonight does is allows them, but in the future, what we're going to bring to you is different options to consider. If you would like to allow that to occur, one of the options would be to count it towards the 6,000 or to have it separate. That's what we've discussed at the last two or three meetings when we've talked about it.
And I may be wrong, but I'd have to go back and look, but I remember we had a question from the floor that said, can I put an accessory structure up? And the answer was yes.
I don't, I don't recall the question.
As long as it was within the 6,000-square-feet. And if it was not within the 6,000-square-feet, it couldn't be heated.
Conditioned.
Conditioned.
I don't remember that particular discussion, but I do know that the ordinance that changed didn't, didn't adjust that at all. So the ordinance that was in place that said there can be no living space above an accessory structure was in place and has stayed in place since, during that timeframe.
Okay, well...
There might have been a mistaken answer to that question at the time. Because part of what occurred here was that someone was dealing with that afterwards,
and I was asked to look at the town code to give an opinion on what it said at that time, but I hadn't been, I hadn't looked at it before. It wasn't something that was on my radar until I looked at it after that was passed.
And I did ask the question to that effect, and I think I phrased it something to, something like, what if somebody had cars and wanted to, you know, heat and cool the garage to keep their cars conditioned? And now, I, I mean, and I didn't even vote for the ordinance, but before we voted on it, I wanted, I asked for that clarification. Because I didn't, I didn't want that problem. Now, I think the distinction to be made is, what, what, is that term "living space"?
Correct.
So maybe, maybe we've got two separate issues in that. One is the 6,000-square-feet, the other one is living space. It sounds like we're trying to correct the living space issue.
Just the living space over accessory structure?
Right.
With regard to accessory structure?
For previous, for structures before...
Already built.
Already built before this time. And then, and then what is your plan of attack on structures going forward? How are we supposed to consider that?
Well, going forward, my plan is to give you two or three options, because you made...
But if I want to build a house today, and I come to Southern Shores, and I want a garage with space above it, and I'm within the 6,000-square-feet, can I build it?
You can't have it, no.
Let me ask you this, Ben. Why did we issue permits for people to build accessory buildings? If we hadn't issued the permits, we wouldn't have this issue tonight.
Well, I think that the situation is that, and it's a common point of confusion between municipalities and planning people, but the distinguishing issue is whether or not it's a dwelling unit. And I think a number of people, particularly in the past, when they were building inspectors who were doing the zoning application review, they look at living space as a dwelling unit concept. Dwelling units would be separate, like a grandmother's suite, somewhere where someone could live completely separate and be rented out and be a home. And what the staff, I think, had done was considered conditioned space that didn't have the necessary utilities to be a dwelling unit to not be, I meant to meet the code. But there was another provision in the ordinance that says, that defined what habitable space was and what living area was, and so that was determined on a heated square footage basis. So that's where the mistake was. But I think these go back...
So...
Multiple years.
They do.
My question is...
They've been recent years as well.
Does this correct the issue and allow for it?
No. It just fixes the past.
This is grand, this just grandfathers, the guys that have it.
Correct.
Exactly right, Gary, and grandfather's a man, that's all.
And we're going to bring to you a sit...
As soon as...
I guess the August meeting will add it to the list. But, well, we have to take it to the planning board first, but the key is you might not, you all might have different views on how you want to deal with it. Some of you may want to keep it the way it is. Some of you may want to count the square footage toward the 6,000-square-feet. Some of you may want to put a certain amount of square footage in the accessory structure and not count it towards the 6,000-square-feet. So I got to put all those together so that people can decide, because I haven't got any direction from a group of council members, a majority, as to one way or the other to go. So we're going to have to propose to you different ways to fix it. And for now, what we're doing is keeping the status quo and letting the people who were illegally non-conforming...
Non-conforming.
Be legally non-conforming, so that the town staff doesn't have to take enforcement action against them. So what this is, is the first step in the process, leaving the status quo of what's going on. And then there will be a second step in the process where the council will get to decide how it wants to address the future. And that may be counting it towards the 6,000-square-feet and having any amount in the accessory structure you want, and it might be limiting it somehow. It could be a number of different things, and that's the part that I haven't finished putting together.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Are there any, any other questions for me?
Thank you, Sam, for what you all do.
Thank you, Sam, appreciate it. We got into the public hearing portion of the meeting pretty quickly, didn't we?
Thanks, Ben.
At this time, I'll call for a public comment. Can you hear me in the back, Sam? Obviously, he can't hear me.
No, he didn't hear you.
He was concentrating on something else.
Dan Lewis. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. On behalf of the Outer Banks Restaurant Association, I just want to say thank you for your prompt efficient, and if I may say so, correct action on the question.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Hope it helps business.
Excuse me. James Cranda.
He had to leave.
He had to leave because they had a fire alarm, I think.
An issue over in my neighborhood or similar.
Joe Van Giszen. Good evening, Joe.
I'm not limited to six minutes during the public hearing, and then I'll defer my office to that.
You're not limited to three minutes.
During the public hearing?
No, the public, public comment is three. Public hearing, you're not limited, we just asked for you to.
I'll defer to the public hearing.
Thank you. Did you sign up on that one as well?
Yes.
Okay, good. HJ Van Belloy. Did I spell it, I spelled it right?
Pronounced it right.
Good evening.
I'll try to talk into this thing, maybe, maybe people could hear. And also, the small print is pretty tough from the back also. John Van Belloy, I live at 151 Yopon Trail. Last year, when I attended a meeting on what was going to be done with the bulkheads in our street, I was led to believe that the bulkheads were going to be replaced in 2016, the street was going to be widened in 2017. I'm a part year resident here now, and when I came back, it looked like about maybe 20% or less of the bulkhead had been replaced. I don't know if that project has been abandoned. I went ahead and cleared out all my sprinkler heads that were within, since we have a 12-foot road, which is going to be a 16-foot road to accommodate that, and I just wonder what's happened. Right now, it looks like a construction zone in progress. Tree, tree strumps along the bulkhead remain from where trees were, were cut. The road is flooding, a lot of mud on the road, and I've kind of asked my neighbors what's going on, and nobody seems to know really what's going on with Yopon Trail. But right now, it's gone from being a beautiful one-lane road to kind of an eyesore because of the work that's been done and the incomplete work. So, I'm curious to what is really going on. Thank you.
Tommy Carroll. Good evening, Tommy.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. I'm going to talk about the bike path a little bit in the report that was submitted by the task force. And if you read that report of January 17th, I think it's important for the council to pay attention, that the spirit of that, of that report is to return Southern Shores to what it was, as neighborhoods. So, I think the spirit of that report talks about remaining, keeping the character and the winding roads and the trees and the brush, and that's the intention. I feel like the council is moving forward, or some parts of the council are moving forward on a bike path that runs from, from Dogwood, the corner Dogwood up to the beach with ignoring the traffic problem. One of the major parts of that proposed, that the, the task force report was to stop traffic as, to the extent of closing the bridge. So, you've gotten the flavor of what the people in this town want. They want the traffic stopped. And in the past, we, we hire architects to look at, to, to look at new firehouses, and we, we look at, we get professionals to look at code right, the, the new code, and we get engineers and surveyors, and we do all this, but we haven't had, and no one's brought up the fact that we haven't gotten a professional to look at what we can do, a true traffic engineer, if there is one, or, or a city planner, on what we can do to this town to get it to the point where, where people want. So, don't keep, don't put the blinders on and say, okay, hey, the task force wants a bike path, so we're going to do a bike path. The, the task force talked to the people at town, took the surveys, and it's overwhelming that they want the traffic stopped. And so, if you look at that, they, they, these people, the people have this, this vision of, of a winding road and a winding sidewalk, and kids on bikes, and dogs, and people with strollers, I mean, want the neighborhood. That's what we're after. We don't want a parade route that keeps the, the, the member of traffic, the cars that came through here, these past couple neighborhoods, especially 4th of July. That's not, that's not the flavor of that task force report, okay? They're talking about stopping the traffic. It was a huge part of that report, stop the traffic. So, we spent all this money, you know, we spent all this money on, on potential firehouses and potential bike paths and surveying and everything. Let's hire a professional to take a look at what we can do to stop the traffic, because it's obvious, obvious in that report, through and through what the intention of these people, what they have in mind. It's keeping the character of the town and stopping the traffic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tommy. Andrew Darling. Evening, Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Town Manager, thanks for letting me talk. I was going to follow up actually with some of the comments that Tommy just made. I see we have plans for a bike path, walkway, call it what you like, on East Dogwood, and it looks pretty good. However, I have a major concern, and that is, how can we afford it? Many of our town streets are not in great condition, and I really think our roadways need some priority of a walking path. Certainly, keeping walkers, joggers, and bike, bikers' safety is a priority. I walk three miles a day on our streets, and I can assure you, I would likely part of that safety, but roads first. Which brings me on to my second point. Our citizens have been asking for years for some relief on the seasonal cut through traffic. The recent Dogwood Task Force came up with one solution to the problem, and the Kitty Hawk Elementary School meeting that we had a few years ago came up with other solutions. Obviously, waiting for the Mid Currituck Bridge is not an answer. And the seasonal cut through traffic seems exceptionally high this year. I stood at the junction of Dogwood, Southeast and North Dogwood the other day, and counted the number of cars that were driving slowly and stopping at the junction. I have to say, it was like one in 10. So, the good ones were, were definitely there, but majority of people were, were not stopping and weren't slowing down. So, this has been around for a long time, and like Tommy, I'd like us to address it, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Millie Routen.
My name is Lauren, sorry.
At this time, I'll close public comment. I'm sorry. There's no one else on my list to speak on public. Now, there's people to hear, might want to speak at the public hearing session, that's Item six, new business, public hearing, consider adoption of a capital infrastructure improvement plan for fiscal year 2017, 2018. At this time, I'll call our Town Manager. Peter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a few comments prior to your council's precedent hearing. The council did change the concept of the capital street improvement preparation to include all infrastructure needs, so we've been referring to this as infrastructure improvement recommendations for the year. And if the council recall back in February, on February regular meeting, the pending capital street improvement list was submitted to you at that time, and since then, we have, staff has tweaked some of the items on there, but it's basically the same list that is recommended to you tonight to consider for active street rebuilds in town. Recall in the budget, the council appropriated $575,000 towards infrastructure improvements. In tab two, starting out is the list of the actual streets that staff still recommends for action. Starting at the top of that list is Yopon Trail. And recall, the last two years, that has been discussed as being in two phases, a southern phase and a northern phase. Also, we are pending with the Department of Division of Coastal Management for a Camel Major Permit still for the end of the street, at the end of the property there, where the cul-de-sac, or the turnaround is at this time, we've applied for a permit to widen that into the canal. And that's what we are applying for that permit, has been sent back for further comments. So, realistically, Yopon Trail still has two segments to it, a northern segment and a southern segment. Bulkhead work has been done on the southern segment, and that's what, what the situation is there. Number two on that list is Juniper Trail. Recall, we've just completed 400 feet of Juniper Trail from the bridge heading south. There's still the remaining portion of Juniper Trail. However, part of that project in concept was one half of Palmetto Lane. The eastern half of Palmetto Lane, we've had many comments and concerns from citizens on that lane, and I would submit to you that that is probably at a critical stage as well. The rest of the streets are as, the same as they have been on the last two years list, 3 through 24 from Clamshell Trail, Skyline Road, and Highway 12 intersection, which is a small area, and then Hillcrest Drive, a section of it. Sea Oaks Trail, number six, a section of it. Number seven, South Dogwood Trail, throughout South Dogwood Trail was the same condition it has been over the last two or three years with continued conditions as described. Number eight is Wax Myrtle. And also included in that item is the Dolphin Run and Porpoise, Porpoise Run, which are in the same condition. Partial segment of Gingite Trail has the observed conditions there. Number 10 is Spindrift Trail, High Dune Loop, Wild Pony Lane intersection, which has been in that condition as well over the last two or three years on this list. Clamshell Trail is an east, we call it an eastern phase, which is Otter Slide to Chickahaw Trail intersection. And then, number 12, East Dogwood Trail, throughout is asphalt and subgrade failures, especially in the wooded area. Number 13, Wax Myrtle and Hickory Trail intersection, you have the same conditions there on the curve, on the, the curves of the, of the intersection. Penn Tail Trail continues, on 14, to have root, tree root intrusion and block cracking. Number 15 is West Holly Trail, stormwater flooding and has drivability issues there. 16 is Bayberry Trail. We recall that all the streets except for Dewberry Lane have been rebuilt in that particular area. Bayberry was the next one on the list, has been so for two, two years. Number 17 is Landfall Loop. 18, Happy Indian Lane for the cul-de-sac. Number 19, Teal Court. Number 20 is North Dogwood Trail, and number 21, Turtle Pond Court. For next year's study, depending on what the council decides, it would like to have addressed this year. For next year's study, we've had several comments from property owners on the northern part of Trinity Trail as it approaches Chickahaw Trail intersection with regard to flooding, street flooding. Recall, six years ago, the town actually put in a perforated stormwater management pipe along Chickahaw Trail to handle the flooding on that street, which it did accomplish. And it was not turned to the south along Trinity, past Bear Track. We considered that, the town considered that a separate phase. There are some concerns on that street now about flooding, and I would submit that the staff would consider looking at that next year to present to you, and so that would be on the list, the staff's list at least, for next year to install the extension of Phase Two of that underground stormwater management system there. And finally, the, not as part of that priority, but its own separate priority, council directed that a, the South and East Dogwood Trails pedestrian walkway be placed on the infrastructure improvement list. Recall, over the last few weeks, the town engineer did complete a design for a portion of that, which is East Dogwood Trail. That has been publicized on the town website and also in notices for tonight's public hearing, as well as in the town newsletters. The actual design has been on the website and available for inspection at Town Hall. For all of these projects, including the streets I mentioned previously, and also for the walkway, there are accompanying sheets in the, in your books about how we would consider estimating those, pre-estimates of the estimates, basically. And typically, on the streets, the town would use a linear foot cost of $150 a linear foot. That would not include these geotechnical studies that are required under these streets, since there had been little or no base discovered underneath them in the past, and it would not include surveying and the pre-engineer design. So, basically, the length of those times the 150 plus the unknown cost is what we would be looking at to take the bid if, if council were to direct. On the cap, on the East Dog, excuse me, the walkway, the five-foot walkway that the council directed to be designed on East Dogwood, the town engineer had submitted some estimates. One, option one was for a five-foot concrete walkway, and it comes in at approximately $305,000 for that section, segment. And then, if it turns into asphalt, the estimate was $354,000. And on the KBI flexi page, which some, a citizen at least, had submitted to the council members, that was, that's estimated to be $532,000 for the East Dogwood section. I believe we have some, the drawings that can be put up on the, for the walkway, but the town engineer is here tonight, Mr. Deal and Mr. Anloff, and I've asked them if they could come up and comment on the design of the walkway while we're on this portion of it ahead of the public hearing, and answer any questions of council on the design as well. Thank you.
Peter, before he starts, I wanted to ask you, is this list in priority order? I assume it is.
Only priority that, that I would like to comment on is Yopon Trail and Juniper and Palmetto.
Okay.
Those specifically have turned into what we would consider priority items. The rest of them, I do not think that you could, they're basically what the council would like to prioritize. I think if you gave the council direction, I mean, the staff direction and the money to do all of them, we would do whichever ones we'd come up first. But the top two, I think, have reached a priority that need to be looked at seriously.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Palmetto Lane, as I understood, is a, is a part of that priority, which may be more critical than, than Juniper Trail itself.
Yes, I've included Palmetto Lane as a part of the Juniper Trail, because that's how we looked at it economically for the last couple of years.
Can I ask, I mean, I'm looking at this, and I brought the, I, I made a motion earlier this year that we increase our streets budget, which we did and then took back away from it. I'm looking at, okay, Yopon and Juniper, and rough estimate, we've got 21 projects here. So, this is really not capital infrastructure improvement plan for this fiscal year.
No, no, that's for, that's for the.
This is future out.
Right.
There's a couple of things I'd like to see. One is that, you know, we put these streets out here, but we put out the side of them, like he's using $150,000 linear foot, put the cost out there and put years across the top, so it would give us an idea of where those streets would be hit, because this year, one and two would be all we could hit with what we've got budgeted.
If we're lucky.
It would run over.
If we're lucky, if we're lucky, we could do those.
Three and four, and possibly five in the next fiscal year. So, it's going to take us over 10 years to work out through these streets, and we have other streets that need attention also. This is just a priority list, am I correct?
These are capital list. None of them, no. None of them, no street, non-capital repairs on, on this list.
Okay. So I would just think, you know, putting a plan out there with years and highlight when complete and when we can hit it, and let the public know what we're doing there. Because really, this is, the only thing we need to be considering is the top two that we need to fix, because that's about what we've got budgeted to fix them.
There's also the path, too.
Well, I mean, the path's going to be a whole different budget item if we have to do, if we even attempt that. It's not, we don't have the money to do that. So just.
Mr. Mayor, I do, once you hear from the engineers on the path.
I'm going to do that, I'm going to do that. Thank you. Andy, good evening.
Good evening.
Late afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just going to take a few minutes to walk you through the plan that we prepared, because this is new. And I'm going to start on the east end of Dogwood Trail at the intersection where the fire station is. So I'd say I'm going to use my mouse here to walk us up the street. What we've, what we've designed and are presenting at this point is basically the first third of the total length that we've been talking about in terms of trail. This takes us from the NC-12 intersection all the way to the north Dogwood intersection. We also have been laying out the section from the north Dogwood, east Dogwood intersection down to the, to the bridge, the Tall Pine Bridge. And then the, the last thing that we'll attack is, is the area south of Tall Pine. But we have this ready to present to you. And starting here on the east end, one of the important components of what we're able to do here is Dogwood Trail, the, the section of Dogwood Trail, basically from the bottom of the hill up to the top and then back down to the, to the intersection, is wider than it needs to be. We, we have basically the same width road on each side of our center median as we would normally have for a two-lane road. So we have the opportunity here to actually remove pavement. And it's one of the nice things that does, several benefits for that, one being that we are reducing the runoff, we're going to have more room for stormwater to gather before it goes down to the hill. So we're just adding to the benefits that we just got down at the intersection. And we're also offsetting the, a significant portion of the new pavement we'll be putting in. Within the drainage shed here for the intersection, we will have a reduction in total area, a total impervious area. So the, the kind of dark bluish gray area that's shown on the, on the drawings here are existing asphalt to be removed. That's the existing, portions of that existing width that we don't need. They're just doing nothing but promoting people to speed down that road, promoting traffic on the road. So the trail will be on the south side of the road, and we've got it coming off and going in the right-of-way up the hill. Generally, we're winding through our trees for this entire length of road from NC-12 to north Dogwood. We are not cutting any trees of any significance, nothing six inches or larger. We stay fairly close to the pavement. One other benefit here with removing pavement is it's helping give us room for the trail. I'm going to take you up the hill to our first, to, actually, we'll start right here at Wax Myrtle. At Wax Myrtle, at Sea Oats, at a number of our intersections, we're putting crosswalks and we're putting features in on the other side of the road. And as a gathering place, as a place, the, a lot of these places already have bike racks, already have benches. We are enhancing them. We have the, the potential to put in shade structures, landscaping, that sort of thing. Jim Connors has, has done some mockups for what these will look like, and I believe that they were over on the table when we all came in. We have these, these potential gathering spots for coming off the side streets, because this trail will be along the thoroughfare on east Dogwood. It does not extend down any of the side streets. The reason being that east Dogwood is the collector. We're pulling people off of the side streets where we have lower traffic, a different situation really on the roads, and trying to get them safely down to NC-12 and across. So that's what these little features are right here. We have a wide enough right-of-way, we're able to do these entirely within the right-of-way, within the, the property that the town has. So continuing up the hill in our median section, I believe this is Hillcrest, yeah, Hillcrest right here at the top, we have another one of these little features. And then we come down the hill and come into the area where we have a normal two-lane road without a median. At this point, the pavement removal will stop, and we'll just be working alongside the existing road. And you can see, we're going along the road, going around trees, going along the terrain. There's, there's not a lot to explain here, other than just pointing out again that because of the size of our right-of-way and because of just providence and luck, we have room to get around the trees, which is, which is a nice plus for this. Again, we're, we're putting in these little, little park areas, little gathering spots. Very similar condition for pretty much the entirety of this portion of the road. The only place where it gets tight is where we cross the bridge. We have enough pavement in the existing condition to, to stripe what's there and to carry our foot traffic across the bridge with normal two-lane road traffic. We have a guardrail along this area, and so the, the pedestrian area will remain adjacent to the pavement all the way up to the intersection. So this is the only area in here, and this is as we're crossing the bridge and approaching north Dogwood, that we will have our trail right beside the road. We'll have it delineated and protected with markers as we come across the bridge, and then we will have a protection curb as we continue on to the intersection. The cost estimates, it's, our proposal, our recommendation is to do this in concrete. A number of reasons why. A, it is going to be the least expensive option. It requires less disturbance of the ground. It's, we don't have to go in and put in the gravel base and extend the gravel base the way we do for an asphalt trail. And it also is more resistant to, to tree roots. You know, asphalt is a flexible pavement, as tree roots burrow under it, the asphalt crumbles in those locations. Concrete, because it's rigid, will resist that. You will have scenarios where eventually tree roots will damage the concrete, but when that happens, you saw cut it out and replace that section. Asphalt, we, we provided a cost estimate for concrete, it came out around $300,000. We did one for asphalt as well, because there were questions about asphalt, there were some concerns about it being a friendlier foot surface for people who run. And construction-wise, it is, it does disturb more area. It also, when doing a five-foot width as opposed to a normal road width, it requires special treatment with the equipment. You can't just back up your dump truck to the asphalt machine and dump it in, so you're, you're handling the asphalt multiple times, typically have a special paver that you have to use. And that adds cost. And so we are, we're estimating that cost at around $355,000. And then we, we did explore one other option, the FlexiPave option. And what this is, is a composite material that's put on a gravel base. It is, it, it's a, basically a shredded rubber that is bound with an epoxy. It creates a permeable surface, so we would have that benefit with it. And it is better with tree, tree intrusion than the asphalt would be. The cost on it, though, it is a specialized product, and the cost on it ends up, our estimate is around $530,000. As I said, we have, we are, we are right now laying out the, the sections along the rest of Dogwood Trail, and we will be providing these to council as we, as we get there. I think that's everything I had. One other thing I wanted to highlight, because I forgot to, the coverage. The total new walkway length times width ends up being 23,900 square feet of total coverage. And that's, of course, across 4,000 linear, linear feet of roadway. We are removing 17,500 square feet of coverage when we do the modifications to Dogwood Trail to the, the two-lane portion with the median. And so we end up, for this 4,000-foot sidewalk, ending up, we end up with only about 6,400 square feet of new impervious surface, and that's distributed over a very large area. So in terms of impact for stormwater, impact for trees, those sorts of things, this is actually a very low-impact project as it's laid out now. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. That's, that's all that I have.
I've got one question. In the slide that you're showing here in the middle, what's the distance from the, from the street to the bike path? Is that like two, three feet, or?
No, it varies. It's through the bulk of this section, it's going to be more than five feet. We may get close right there.
Can't tell from the graphics. Go to the paper. To separate vehicular traffic from the walkway, are you putting curbs there? Or you just, the, will it be just sown with grass?
Only where we, where we're, we're under five feet. And there is a section right here where we're under five feet, and so we would have a mountable curb there. And what we'll do is, the design hasn't, hasn't gotten to the point of the fine-tuning of the grading. That would happen if, if we're moving forward with this. What we would do is, is examine what's happening drainage-wise there, and we would either carry that water to one end of the curb, or we may put some pass-throughs in the curb for, for water to come through. It's, but yes, there's a section of curb right here. There are a few sections of roadway, and as I said, along this area, we will have it as well. There are a few sections where, because of terrain and trees, we ended up closer to the road with the trail than we wanted to be.
Well, my concern is, when you have a path that close to a, a major, you know, little street, that gives the appearance that the street's wider and people will speed, and I didn't want to put pedestrians in, you know, any kind of danger. And sometimes they'll even veer over as that's part of the street.
Right. Well, our, our experience is.
I mean, the pass, the cut-through traffic, we've seen, seen some of it all, especially down on the other end of south Dogwood.
Right.
And it's a concern.
We are going to have a five-foot wide minimum green strip between the roadway and the trail for the vast majority of this. And these few spots where we're closer than that, we're putting a, a curb in, a mountable curb. So there will be the visual separation there, and there's still a, a green strip between those. One nice thing in terms of the amount of traffic and the speed they're going is, once you get to the hill, we're going to be taking away a bunch of that asphalt that really invites people to, to speed. It's, we're, we're going to be bringing that down to 12-foot wide lanes for that, and separating our trail from that.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Anybody else have questions?
This, this whole project, can, in your opinion, should be done at one time, or could it be split?
This could be, this could be split, but it, it's kind of a logical, in, in my mind, it's, it's kind of a logical start and finish. You know, we will be picking up 10 streets if we build this section from the, from north Dogwood all the way to the fire station. And it's, you know, a lot of people that live on those streets and utilize this thoroughfare to get out to the beach.
Okay.
But there's no, yeah, there, there is not a reason that we couldn't say, no, we want to make it this street and build from this street the rest of the way. It can be done in, in whatever pieces we need to do it in. I would just, if we were going to do that, I would recommend starting at the fire station and working up from there.
Starting on highway, at Highway 12.
Yes.
Working your way back to the west.
Okay.
You had something you wanted to ask, Chris?
I did. I thought I heard you say in, in your report that there were no trees that were removed. Is that correct?
In this set of plans, from north Dogwood to NC-12, there are no trees being removed.
And that's using the concrete.
No trees, and I, I always need to qualify that, no trees of significance, six inches or larger. It's there, there may be some small stuff that doesn't show up on our surveys, but no, there aren't. I even went one last time before the meeting and slowly drove the road to make sure nothing was missed.
Are there places within this? I, I'm, like, Brett, I'm, in Chickahaw, we have, over the Chickahaw Bridge, there's, it's awfully narrow, and there's, and there's the curb, and I know on some of the bridges, there may be nothing we could do about it, but that area is a bit of a choke point, and there is some concern, I always have a concern for pedestrians in that situation. In your plan, are there circumstances where you said, okay, we could move it further away from the road, but we have to take a tree down?
There, I, yes. You know, this being one of those cases, although our, our grade, I would have to, potentially. I, I, I don't want to definitively say yes. Grading plays a role in it, and.
So it's too early at this point?
Yeah. It's, there, there may be an opportunity, that, that may be a trade-off that we can make, but I, I can't say it definitively, because I'm eyeballing trees here, but there's a lot of time, there's slope that goes along with that. And if we start moving, it may not be one tree, it may be, you know, right on up the hill as we cut. So that's, that's a question I would have to answer later.
I got a question. Back at, coming down the hill, going up the hill and down.
Yeah.
We basically have a four-lane road there.
We basically do, correct.
Are you removing one lane on either side?
We are. It's, now, of course, from the intersection up to Wax Myrtle, we are going to have stacking two-thirds of the way up that hill, so we're keeping all of our pavement there, and then transitioning down. This is on, let me back up. The eastbound's lanes going towards NC-12, we will have two lanes of stacking, just like we do today, for people going left, going straight, and taking a right-hand turn. And we, and that's, that's shown in this area. And then, when we get about two-thirds of the way up to the intersection, we transition out of that to a single lane. On, for people that are coming off of NC-12 and going up the hill, we just do a gradual transition, starting at the intersection. And that's there because large trucks, large vehicles, even small vehicles, it's nice to have the extra pavement as you go through a turn, and then neck down to what you're ultimately going to drive through.
So my, I guess my question, next question would be, without removing that, would it be wide enough and safe enough to put that path on the existing pavement without removing it?
We could, I mean, that's essentially what you have today, if you striped it. Yes, it's, we could, from the intersection up to the top of the hill and back over, with the exception of, of the area, as we get to the intersection, where we really need to separate, and we have, you can see our trail comes off where we, we need to get those two lanes for cars to stack. But, but yeah, there, there is the potential to run the, 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 the trail or the sidewalk in the footprint of the existing asphalt. We don't have necessarily a full width, you know, the asphalt width varies there. The, the one concern with doing that is, again, the, the separation, the, the visual, the, you know, what, what we talked about just a minute, moment ago. But yes, if we were looking for a budget way to separate traffic from, to, to at least make use of our existing infrastructure and not, not change anything, we would go and we would stripe all the way down that hill, stripe out the, the pedestrian area versus the.
We've already done that, we've already done that on the, on the, on the south side of the road.
Yes.
From the top of the hill all the way to the, to the beach, to the, to Highway 12.
Yes.
But that wouldn't get us to Dogwood, that wouldn't get us all the way to north.
No, that, that's a.
It just gets us up over the hill.
It's part of the path, I mean, as far as, but what about, and I know this one will probably not go well, but what about using one side for road and one side for pedestrian? I mean, I'm just thinking of options.
That's, well, it would require some changes at the, at the stoplight, or you could transition to that as you came from the stoplight up to Wax Myrtle.
Instead of.
That's, that would be, if, if, that's really, that's a town decision, a council. That's, that would be, if, if, that's really a, that's a town decision, a council decision. From an engineering standpoint, I, I would need to go and double-check my, my widths to make sure I've got the full twenty-four the whole way, because we would want twenty-four for the traffic, for the traffic load we get.
Because the rest of that street's a two-lane street.
Right.
And if you cross to the beach side, it's a two-lane street.
Right.
And that would keep the natural vegetation in the middle as a buffer?
Yeah, it, it's, you could do that. I know that you, that this, taken off my engineering hat for a moment, just in the conversations that, that, some of the conversations I've heard about this area, and also about some of the things with the little pocket parks that we're talking about doing, this is considered one of the entrances to the town, even though NC-12 is through the town. This is, the boulevard look with the center median and the, and the, the road going on both sides of a center median is an aesthetic thing that, that, I think that was the concern, or, or was one of the reasons it was built this way. But functionally, yes, it's, eh, with probably, with probably a repaving to make sure that we get everything just right, a repaving of, of the lanes that will be holding, carrying the, the traffic. Yes, we, we probably could shift all of the traffic in, onto one side of it.
Could, then, could, could that space be reclaimed as green space? Because, because the concern that the roadblock is legitimate, that people, not, not just, not just people visiting, but, but locals will try to drive on paved surfaces if they're above a certain width, and we saw that in Chickahaw, people were constantly using their golf carts to go down the paths, the road-certified golf carts. So, I mean, could, could one lane be completely, essentially move the path to the center of one side of the road and then re-vegetate? Take out, that's fine.
And that's what I'm trying to avoid from you.
Oh, no.
But I understand your point.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just following it through to make it an amenity, because once you-
They can't hear in the background.
Well, once you, once you go ahead and, if you keep it there, you're going to need to put bollards up and all sorts of stuff, and you know people might just cross over into it, so-
I don't, I don't.
At that point, you really want to take all that asphalt out.
Well, you can put signage, and there's barriers that you can put up to keep, I understand.
I understand.
People go through anyway.
So, so that's what I'm saying, if you're going to do it, you make it narrow and you go all the way, and I don't know if that's going to save costs, but it's an intriguing thought.
To, just, just to kind of reiterate, as, as I'm thinking about this, so what we're talking about would be essentially reworking from Wax Myrtle down, keeping it more or less the same, but merging this lane and this lane all together, and then running them, say, on the north side, funneling all of our traffic onto this side, and then running all of our traffic in this, what's currently one lane, but could easily be two, all the way up over the hill and the, and to the bottom.
To where it comes.
To where it comes together.
Or the median to-
And then, from basically this intersection up, we would take this, and we would make it basically a linear park. We would have a trail situated in that, maybe meandering, maybe going down the middle.
You could use that, so.
Yeah, we would, it, it probably would, we would need to probably update this side of the road, just to make sure we have proper shoulders and everything to carry both lanes of traffic. But yes, it's, I, I do see that scenario as one that, that would work.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments, counsel?
Do, do you see that as a-
I'd like to go ahead.
Cost-wise, does that, I, I mean, intrigued by the thought, but do you think that's a less expensive option, or are we talking the same money anyways?
We would probably be talking the same money. The same money or slightly more. It all depends, it, it's really something. We're still going to be paying for a trail. We're going to be paying for a little more demolition, because now we're taking out all of this asphalt, and we'll be paying for, for some asphalt work that the, the other scenario doesn't have in updating this road and, and make, merging this into it. So it would, it would end up costing a little bit more.
Wait. I'm not talking about taking out the asphalt, I'm talking about using the existing road that's already there.
Not taking out this asphalt. Well, that's-
That would give you a nice trail, and you've already got vegetation on both sides. So wouldn't that be more cost-effective? And that's why I even brought it up.
That would end up, that would end up costing less. It's, so, all of this pavement would, we would have the town of Southern Shore Skate Park.
You, you need a twenty-foot-wide walking trail, is what you're, what you're saying.
Well, it's there, I'm, I'm not-
It's there if you eliminate that as a traffic for, for cars.
Right. I'm just looking for cost-effective.
Right. Right, I understand.
Technically, yes.
We need to pave our roads.
Technically, yes, and aesthetically, you, you would need to figure out what updates, if you were going to do updates to that, to, to make it more inviting.
But what impact would that, that particular design have on our stormwater management program down here at the end?
I, that scenario would have very little impact on it at all. It's, eh, we basically would have the same amount of impervious coverage coming down to the intersection, unless we did something, eh, you, unless we did come up here and do some updates in this area. But, but just leaving the pavement as is and repurposing it with, with minimal reworking to, to merge traffic, we end up with the same amount of water coming to the intersection.
You, you almost have to kind of create a green buffer zone so that it's, cars would know not to go in there, so for a certain period, like when you're making a right turn or a left turn, you'd have to protect that so that folks wouldn't want to drive on it.
Right.
And then you get to the superpath, then you can go down.
Superpath.
You know what I'm saying? You, you have to-
You've got the artifact coming.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate your, your presentation, man.
Thank you.
Very excellent job. Appreciate that. This time, I'll ask our, our town attorney to direct a public hearing, consider adoption of our federal capital infrastructure improvement plan for fiscal year 2017, 2018, give the public a chance to speak.
Mr. Mayor, do you have the, the list of people who've signed up?
Uh, no, I don't. She's-
She's bringing it.
Bringing it to you right now.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. And I open the public hearing to consider the adoption of a capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2017, 2018. I'm going to go through the list of people who've signed up, and I'll ask at the end of that if there's anyone else who has any comments that they'd like to make. If you would raise your hand at the time, I will recognize you. When you come up, if you could state your name and your address, and like the mayor said, we're not going to limit you to the three minutes, but please be courteous for the rest of us who are here from, from a time perspective. First person on the list is Martha Elliott.
Please bear with me, I'm not used to speaking. Peter, you sort of stole my thunder, so I'm going to give you some pictures to look at as to what our street looks like. When they did our bulkhead, they, at the end of the street, at 157, I think they made our bulkhead too sw- too short. Every time the tide comes high, it comes over, and every time it rains, we have a big puddle down there. At this section, the so-called dirt that was placed there washes away and onto the street, and is a big mess. We can't even wash our cars without getting them dirty within fifty feet. The clay dirt will not grow any grass or anything. Believe me, I know, because I planted grass in front of my house, and it is a big disaster. Even the roadwork is done, I think we need to address the canal side first before you do anything. We need some kind of dirt there to hold the grass or something, because our street is just not passable. We're running on lawns, trying to get away from the dirt that's there, it's just a real big mess. And it looks like a war zone there, where they took off the trees, where they cut down the trees, they left them standing about like this. And if anybody travels that street that doesn't know our street, they try to go over, and they take out the bottom of their cars. So, uh, that's all I need. I forgot to say, I'm Martha Elliott, and I live at 143.
Thank you, Mrs. Elliott.
Good job.
Joe Van Geeson.
Thank you, Mayor, and Town Council for your time.
And Joe, you said six minutes, right?
Probably, that's about right. My printer broke, so I'm going to use my computer. Just for historic context, the north-south and east-Dogwood Trail intersection was originally budgeted at around twenty-three thousand in, in the annual budget for the, that fiscal year, I think it was 2014, 15. Project ended up costing somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand. You know, that's just for context, because I want to address some issues with the recent project that was done on Juniper, and what looks like to be proposed for Juniper for this coming year, and hope that we can learn from history and avoid past mistakes. And that project at north-south and east-Dogwood added infrastructure that did not previously exist, gutters, curves, drains, pipes crisscrossing underneath the road, huge, relatively large drainage retention basin. And that was in an area where there was no prior runoff, collection, flooding, transfer of water from the road into the yards, according to all the people that live right there at the intersection. So the CIP plan for, proposed for this coming year is the first time that we are going to be implementing a plan that was prepared without prior citizen input through the Capital Improvement Committee process, because the committee was eliminated, I believe, last December by a three-to-two vote, with the mayor, Councilman Holland, and Councilman Nason voting for eliminating the committee, and Councilman Newberry and McDonald voting to keep the committee. So this is the first time we're going to go through the process where our first input comes at this public hearing. Recently completed project on Juniper Trail hadn't been considered in prior years. The fifteen, sixteen capital improvement plan did not list Juniper, it wasn't even on, on the map, let's say, or it wasn't even contemplated. Based on my notes taken at the May seventeen, 2016 Capital Improvement Committee meeting, which was one of the last ones that was ever held, the project popped up to number four in the priority ranking, at suggestion of Councilman Nason, with the recommendation of Town Manager Rasko. At the time, the basic description of the problem was that there was a bump at the base of the bridge that needed to be smoothed out because people were bottoming out sometimes, probably, and Chris even acknowledged, probably because they were going too fast, or they were towing a trailer or something. Wasn't a problem for everybody. But that was the justification that was given at the committee meeting, and I've got it in my notes. And the project was described as repairs to the street and sidewalk at the area south of the Juniper Culvert Bridge. Remember that description, because this relates to what's being proposed for next year. Again, I'm talking about last year's project, it was just recently completed. I think because the, at the time it was budgeted, that it was thought to be eliminating of a bump near the bottom of the, end, end of the bridge, it was budgeted for $12,000 in the 2016, 17 capital improvement budget. Project ended up costing, excuse me, a contract was awarded to RPC this past May for a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty. That's a factor of twelve increase. So something changed between when it was put in the budget for the fiscal year, the previous fiscal year, and when the project was implemented. So think about that. That's the same kind of thing that happened at the north-south and east-Dogwood Trail intersection. Went from twenty-three thousand to, I believe was around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty-something. So as you discuss the proposed plan for next year, think about the history, and try to address why we went from twelve thousand to a hundred and forty-seven thousand, a hundred and forty-eight. And that doesn't include the cost of the engineering. I'm curious about what was the cost of the engineering, because there was a lot of engineering done on the four-hundred-foot section that was ultimately replaced. And by the way, why was a four-hundred-foot section replaced when the initial justification for the project at the capital improvement meeting attended by citizens was to eliminate a bump at the bottom of the bridge? So, my point is, are there any lessons learned here that we can use to avoid cost increases, over-budgeted estimates for the future projects? Moving on to the proposed project, there was no second Juniper project considered in last year's capital improvement project. The only one that was discussed was the one, not the one that was implemented even, but a very, very much smaller project than the one that ended, ended up being implemented. Now we have, if you take out the Palmetto lane portion of it, we have a seventeen-hundred-and-fifty-foot stretch that's going to be replaced. Where did, where did the idea come from? Why did we go from not even considering it last year to now it's number two on the list? I'd like to hear a justification for that. And the description of the project is repairs to street and sidewalk in the area south of the Juniper Culvert Bridge. It's this exact same wording that was used for the four-hundred-foot section last year. It doesn't seem to me that it's, it's appropriate to do four times or more length using the same justification, it looks like somebody just regurgitated the words because they were on the piece of paper. The same, the plan that we have, the proposed infrastructure plan, talks about general cost, generally, the construction, rebuild projects cost a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. If you look at the Juniper project, at a hundred and forty-seven thousand, without engineering costs, we're talking about three hundred and sixty-eight dollars per foot for this recently completed project. So, again, think about escalating costs because of changes in scope, or because of additional, uh, uh, features in the design. If we operated at a hundred and fifty thousand, if we achieved that hundred and fifty dollar per square, per foot, we would have a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar project just for the remainder of Juniper, not, including Palmetto. If we end up going at three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, as we did with the existing project, and it's the same stretch of road, I don't see a whole lot different between the remainder of Juniper and what was already modified, we'd be up to six hundred and forty thousand. So as you're considering this proposed project, I also have some, some things that I'd like you to keep in mind. Why did this thing move up to number two on the list when it didn't even exist in the plan last year? What is so important about that stretch of road that we need to spend that kind of money? Majority of that road, and by the way, I ride on it a lot, especially on the weekends on my bicycle, because you get away from the traffic on, on South Dog, on, uh, South Dogwood. Majority of that road is beautiful, it's in perfect condition. There are stretches where there's that underground subsidence, or I'm not sure what the right word is, but it looks like organic material is decomposed and is subsided, and the road sinks. But that's the only thing that's wrong with that road. There are four or five places, twenty feet maybe in length, where that, that is serious subsidence, and yeah, you got to slow down even for doing the speed limit because of the bumps. I recommend we consider modifying or repairing those stretches of the road where it's needed, because the rest of the road looks, is probably the, the best quality pavement we've got, except for the, some of the recent projects. I think it's a waste of our money to, to do the whole thing. So, in summary, we, we've had a lot of people come to, before the board, Town Council, and Town Council members have said this, we've had it from, from our engineer, people saying, well, the roads weren't designed properly to begin with, they were substandard, or they were designed for a different type of use. Yet, most of our roads, and the, the ones that haven't been rebuilt yet, are forty or fifty or more years old. And some of them are in pretty decent shape, except that the asphalt has deteriorated because all of the volatile material is gone, and because of the, the ultraviolet damage, and because of the, the weight of the traffic. So, if, if these roads are substandard, why do they last forty to fifty years, and now we're getting around to replacing them? So I think some of these roads don't need to be taken down and rebedded, and I would like second opinions on whether that's really necessary or not, because we're spending a heck of a lot of money, and we've got a lot of big projects ahead of us, we're going to be doing this path, beach nourishment, fire station, and I think we ought to be looking at ways to economize, doing it well, doing it properly, but I think we overbuild sometimes, and I wish we would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Geeson. Jerry Sullivan?
Jerry Sullivan, I live at thirty-one Tenth Avenue West. Mayor Bennett and counsel, I'd like to talk about the need for long-range plan- Mayor Bennett and Council, I'd like to talk about the need for long-range planning as it applies to Capital Improvement Plan. I, I thought at first this was a prioritize list, but I understand it's not, right? Not, there's no priority here, it's just we, it's a list to pick from. I wouldn't, I would, so I thought we might have had a priorities list, we don't even have that. The only thing we have is a hundred and fifty dollars. Now, one thing I'd like to mention is, I went through the process of adding this all up. This comes out to seven million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars. Using the amount in this year's budget, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it's going to take us over thirteen years to do the roads on that plan. And if Joe was right, it's going to take us twenty-six, because we're about double that. If we took the first three roads on the list, we'd be over our limit for, for this year. By the way, if you look at South, South Dogwood, that comes out to a million, over a million eight. That means it would take you three years using the current budget to actually rebuild that road. Now, what does that mean? Well, let's talk about the Dogwood Trail walking path, by the way, which, you know, is, is, looks like it's a good project, but based on the lowest estimate, the concrete path, we're now talking about spending three hundred and five thousand dollars, about seventy dollars a linear foot. If we add it into the design cost, we're over eighty dollars a linear foot. Since we have almost three miles of proposed walking paths in our plan, we're talking about another million dollars. How are we going to fund that? And by the way, that's not inconsistent with what the state has. They, if you go out on the state website, they're saying the average walking path costs about four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a mile, and this was for four thousand some square feet. And we haven't even mentioned the fact that, at one of the meetings recently, we talked about the replacement of the Juniper Trinity Bridge, which should probably cost us well over a million dollars. Can we wait thirteen years to fix that bridge? Because I don't see it on this list. And what about the fire station that's going to cost between four and five million the last time I heard about it? Where is a plan that shows me when we plan to do all these projects, year by year? And by the way, what's it going to cost me in taxes? I am concerned that we continue to approve project after project in a vacuum, without putting together a total plan with priorities. And I hope, I hope we don't just sit here tonight and do two bridges, and yet the walking path sounds like a good idea, let's do that next year, and then push it down the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Good evening, I'm Mark Martin, one ninety-one Wax Myrtle Trail. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council and staff. Just a couple of quick notes. When all the work was done at the twelve intersection there with the stormwater, which seems to be working pretty well down through there, quite a bit of damage happened on the intersection of Wax Myrtle, right off of Dogwood there, and I think you've all probably have seen that, there's another pothole just came up within the last couple of days, I think. I found it coming from the north to the south, and did a little damage to the truck. But there's two of them there right now. We're getting a lot of runoff coming down the hill from that burn that probably needs to be addressed. And then the other two things on the capital improvement, on Wax Myrtle and Dolphin and Dogwood, the biggest problem we're having is where the trash trucks were getting out, coming down Dolphin and Porpoise, going out on to twelve. And a lot of the dump trucks that were working on the twelve intersection had to come around that area, so there's always a big hole in there, and that section just needs to be widened up. I don't know that you have to repave Wax Myrtle, hopefully none of my neighbors are here, because, you know, on the weekends, it's still, you know, it's a, it's a runway down through there, so, you know, it's, it's fine the way it is, you know, we can kind of work through some things, but there are a few specific spots that I've seen over twenty years that have been a problem, you know, right from the get-go. The only thing on the bike path I'll throw out, just because I'm familiar with that section, is the, when you're coming from the north to the south on Wax Myrtle, Sea Oats, and Hickory, so coming out, coming down towards the south, most of the people coming that way are headed to the beach. They're on that, the opposite side of the road, or on the east side of the road, they're not going to cross those streets, come across the road, and then backtrack with coolers, kids, chairs, all that stuff. They're cutting the corner, they're trying to get to the beach as quick as they can. So I think we need to take a hard look at flipping that to those sides, at least coming down that hill, so those three spots, right? And then the other thing, is what I see, and back to your, Gary, your point, when they're coming out of Wax Myrtle and down the hill, they're on the, you know, facing side of the road on the north side there, when they get to the intersection at the bottom of the hill, they don't know where to go, because there's no cross path there. And a lot of people aren't thinking, what's going to happen when I get to the bottom of the road? It's too late by the time they get to the bottom of the road, then they're standing there dodging traffic, so.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the Capital Infrastructure Improvement Plan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, staff. I'm Steve Hotchkiss, and I live at the intersection of Hickory and Hillcrest, two sixty-three Hillcrest. I first like to comment also on the lack of priorities. It's hard to give comment on what should be done when there aren't priorities given to the list. Secondarily, the, the money is very limited, and I look at the project on East Dogwood. I consider myself a professional pedestrian in this town. I put in over forty miles a week, running and walking. I go down East Dogwood often. It is one of the least of our issues in terms of pedestrians. Because we have the wide road and path, I never feel in danger. People I see walking up and down the road to the beach have wide stance. Striping the road would be perfect, putting a curb there on both sides would be excellent. Why are we taking away pavement to put in other pavement when we have such limited funds? Let's look at where people are in danger. I go down North Dogwood, I, I made the mistake of going down this last Saturday on my foot. You don't want to be on that road. We should be working on North Dogwood if we're going to do anything. I know we want to get traffic off of there, but as a pedestrian, when any car comes down, there is no place to step off in places. And when cars are coming both directions, I've had a couple of close calls within the last couple of weeks where one car can't go across, and the other car coming from the other direction that can't see me is honking the horn, trying to push the other car over. Please move East Dogwood down on the list, at least where the road is wide, and save money and take advantage of what we already have. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Quick question. You've said North Dogwood, do you mean South Dogwood?
I mean South Dogwood.
Yeah, because North Dogwood gets very little traffic, except for residents.
No, I, I mean South Dogwood.
Yeah, I thought you, you described what your situation and what had happened, I figured you had to be talking about South Dogwood.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you. My name's Kerry Elfman, I live at ninety-five Trinity Trail, and I came to introduce myself, I'm going to probably be a fixture here. My property has flooded twice in the last six months, and it's not natural. I've, I've been, I've had it explained that it was a thousand-year flood in Matthew, and bite the bullet, and we incurred a huge expense to renovate a thousand-foot basement and garage. We flooded again Saturday from a thunderstorm. The development of the property next door to me may have a lot to do with it, but the number three project of moving the drainage from the intersection of Chickahawke and Trinity Trail may help me out, because my property's going to be lost again, and it's not when, or not if, it's when. The next time we have five inches of rain, I'm going to have a foot, six inches in my basement. It's a finished basement. I just would like to ask you to entertain moving the priority up to help out somebody who's getting hurt bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
We have five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we can, that we've allocated or budgeted for infrastructure improvements. We can debate this, Council, for the rest of the evening, but I would suggest, let me ask the Town Manager his recommendation on what, how he'd like to propose to us, we do this, this five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, see what his thoughts are.
Well, if, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you stick to the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar budget tonight, I would recommend you consider having staff take the southern section of Yopon Trail, the Palmetto Lane, and then the walkway, if that's what council wants to do, and have us bid those out, and see if they come in at five seventy-five or less. And if they do, they would be the projects, if they don't, we would bring it back to the council for further deliberation. That would be one option to consider. That would leave the lower part of Juniper, and also the clam, the stormwater management project for the intersection of Trinity and Chickahawke left on the list for next year. That's just one option at five seventy, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we could try that.
What was the second one, Peter?
Yopon, the southern half of Yopon Trail, and then Palmetto Lane, the eastern half, and then the, the walkway for East Dogwood Trail. Don't know if we can make it or not, but that's something we could try to bid and see if we came in on, on your budget, and if, if we could, we could proceed, if not, we would bring it right back to you for further discussion. That's just a suggestion.
Peter, excuse me, thank you. I, Council, I'm, I'm picking up on some ambivalence about the trail right now, whether we want to even consider it all, or we want to, we want to break it up in smaller sections. Any thoughts on that, any comments?
Yeah, I've got quite a few thoughts. I think the walkway is completely out, we just don't have the money. After hearing what people have been saying for the last several minutes, we need to prioritize this list, and the priority should be based on need and requirements. Putting in a walkway when we can't even repair some of the serious problems we have, the lady that got up and spoke about Yopon Trail, sounds like it's a real mess down there. We definitely need to fix that. I'm sure there are others, and I recommend that the staff go back and reprioritize this list based on what the requirements are. The requirements being the most damaged, or the most need of repair, and not because it's just up on the list. Obviously, we haven't, haven't prioritized it. We haven't even defined what the criteria for prioritization is. So how can we recommend something if we don't even know why we're recommending it? That's, those are my thoughts.
We do have, we do have standards and things we look for as far as prioritizing the streets and the sequence we should try to do them, and there's.
But, but we haven't done it.
We haven't done it with all of this list, you're absolutely right.
We haven't prioritized it. We don't have a long-range plan on any of this. We don't have a method of tracking the budget with the plan. I mean, to me, I'm kind of embarrassed to look at this and try to make a decision, because I don't have enough information to make a good decision. And to me, South, I mean, the East Dogwood Trail is a nice thing to have, and I think these guys did a beautiful job of designing it, but if we don't have the money to pay for it, and we don't have the money to pay for street rebuilds that are critical to the citizens, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what else you can do.
Thank you, Fred. Leo, you have thoughts?
Well, I'm just listening to that gentleman there talking about the drainage over there on, on Clamshell and Chickahawke, that probably, that needs to be addressed, because it's, it's impacting somebody's properties. In which, you know, if you look at the other end where they did put the pipe in, we don't have a problem down there. You know, I have no problem with, you know, those, those top three, but there's one I'd like to see if, if we can squeeze it in, would be to address this stormauto issue down here at Skyline and Highway Twelve, because that, that's a problem. And I walk that, and I do walk through water periodically, but I think this, this one over here, Clamshell, needs to be looked at. That's my opinion. If we can do it. So probably, what I would think, what Peter suggests, is go back and see what we can, kind of bids we can get, or what our actual cost we're going to be looking at, and then manage it from there.
Well, should we, should we give you a list that includes the trail or does not include the trail? That's, that's the question. We can, we can hit a lot of these streets if we don't have the trail in there.
I, I'd like to see the trail. I mean, I'm fortunate, I probably won't be using it, because I've got our sidewalk over on, on Spindrift, and coming down here is, coming down twelve I walk on, and I walk that every day, and it's about two and a half, three miles. But we, we would be spending over half of our budget on that particular area, and I think we need to address our streets specifically when we've got an issue of flooding.
Thank you. Gary, you have any thoughts?
Yes, sir.
You want to share them with us?
I don't think we, you know, everything is needed, and I've stated that, and I've tried to get us to increase the amount of money we're spending on this infrastructure. Yopon, you know, we, we need to move on that south end of that, and make corrections back if it's flooding out there, because I hope we didn't create that issue the lady spoke about. Palmetto, that is a bad road, it drops, it's been undercut, and that probably should stay in there and be fixed. I think we could probably, and I'm, I'm going on your hundred and fifty, and I really, that gives us the ability to fix Clamshell, and then look at another project. Maybe, and maybe even phase two of the Yopon in this next year, I've got me, I'm up to about four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars there, with an eighty thousand dollar busher, bu- buffer, which would allow us to look at what, and I can't remember, I think it was Joe that said, looking at fixing those segments of Juniper that are rough, because once, from the area where it's been paved, till you get down the hill where it drops off, it's a pretty good road, it was done in two thousand and two, and it was rebedded, the works. And, you know, I, I'm thinking we need to look at that. If we decide that we want to move forward on this trail, I think what we should do is probably look at getting a grant through the tourist bureau, applying, approaching them, and set aside some monies in next year's budget to be a matching grant, to start that process, move forward, and seeing if they would cover part of the cost, which they have done in our neighboring towns.
That's true, but we're faced, the tourism board right now is faced with a little bit of challenge on that funding for grants. We're in a holding pattern right now, because it hasn't been fully resolved at the legislature yet.
I understand.
We got, it, we thought it was done, but it got pulled into the Finance Committee, and we're concerned that when they go back in the session again in Au- in August. we're concerned that when they go back into session again in August, we, we could be restricted, so we're not committing to any, any grants until that's straightened out, or, you know, we get a reading on it.
Well, and, you know, at that point, we would not, but if we want to move on that path, and, you know, I also...
But, yeah, we have, there's been funding all the way up and down on it.
But I, I'm thinking, the last gentleman, I think Steve spoke about it being safe out there when he's walking, and I'm, I know that part, I've come through the woods and go out there and bike, and I never really have any trouble out on Wax Myrtle or going up and down that area. But I do know that North Dogwood is...
You mean South Dogwood?
Well, South Dogwood is very tight, and because of the number of cars that hit there on the weekend, and folks, we have to remember, this is the time of year when people are out walking and taking their kids, and that would be probably the place we'd need to look... I'm of the point where I think that's also the place we need to look first before we do this. I'd like to see a trail connected all the way through, but, you know, we've got to prioritize, and I wish this was in a priority list. But I think we need to move forward on our roads first on this one. And, you know, we've got other roads that are in bad shape. If you look at Chico Hawk, I'm on the right road, let's see, coming out to the beach, it's breaking up, got some holes in it. It's not on this list. We may have to move it on to the list next year or so. And I know Hillcrest is in bad shape, where the curbs are falling off and those kinds of things, so we've got a lot of roads projects.
Thank you, Gary. Let me, let me talk to Chris, ask Chris if he has anything he wants to add.
Did you, you guys are motioning for a talk. I just want to clarify in this discussion, I, I think that there's a discrepancy, that the drainage problem...
Mr. President, if this project is not number three?
It's not number three. It's trying, it's on Trinity Trail, it's not actually on this list. So I just wanted to make sure, because there, there was reference to number three and his drainage problem, and they're not the same thing. I just wanted to make sure if he's being...
And it's a separate, separate issue.
That's a separate, I understood that, but that road also needs to be repaved. So, I mean, and we've got it at number three on this list, up to Otter Side, and Otter Slide. Also, like Leo said, that intersection down at Skyline, you know, it's like a little pond there every time it rains, and that's true not only there, but you go down to the numbered streets like 10, 11, and so forth, you've got, every time we rain, we've got flooding down there.
And that, that one, it hangs around for a while because it doesn't drain, and then in the, then in the wintertime, if it gets cold enough, then you get some ice in, you know, we've had some, the residents have brought this to us before.
As I see it, we have a couple of choices here, we have a multitude of choices, but two we might want to consider, or I would think we might want to consider is, number one, take Yopon Trail, take Palmetto Lane, take Clamshell Trail, and Skyline Road and Highway 12 intersection, ask our town manager to get to price those out for us, and give us a cost, and decide if we want, how much of that, if any, or all of it we want to do. Include the second half of Yopon if we have money left to do that, the north end of Yopon. The other choice we have, now let you, I'll just talk just in a minute, the other choice we have is to reconstitute our CPI committee, Capital Improvements Project, and have a deal with infrastructure totally, reconstitutes that long enough to come up with a really strong priority list, and work together as a team with the staff, and come up like we had two years ago, a priority list that we could then take, take the guesswork out of it, and say, okay, we know this street. Now, that's going to change some because conditions change, as you know, but at least have a workable priority list we can, that council can then look at, not just this year, but for next year as well, and years following. What are your thoughts on that, counsel? And I'll start with you, Chris, because I know you have interest in the trail.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not prepared to give up on the trail, but I am sensitive to Gary's comments about possibly using some of the infrastructure. So, so we've got, we're looking at that, that trail being approximately 305, roughly 300,000 for the whole thing to do it the way it's proposed. Steve Hotches brought up a very good point about that area down below. It kind of marries well with what Gary said about using some of that infrastructure we've got. I would posit that we, that we keep the trail on there, we look at abbreviated, abbreviating it so it starts at some point at the hill or a safe point beyond the hill, bring it up to South Dogwood, because to Gary's point and to also Steve's point, that is the most dangerous area. The path from the school ends at the cemetery. We need to make that connection, but it's not going to happen in one year, to everybody's point.
No, that, that's going to be a long range.
It's going to be a long way, but, but if, we've got to make these investments bit by bit, and, and I'm not saying we're going to be able to accomplish it all, but if we can get that 305 to 150, I think that's equally as important as the streets. I would also agree that not all the streets are in dire circumstances. We've got a lot of items on here, but they're not, they're not all going to fall apart immediately. So I'm sensitive to Yopon, and I'm sensitive, having just driven on Palmetto, that, that is a bit of a roller coaster. It's, there's no question, there's an issue there, and, and that one, I, was one that I, I might agree without, could be an expensive project even though it's short, just because the grading there is fussy. And I, and I'd say, you know, the 150 a square foot is just a target, it's a best guess, it does sound like it meets state standards, but not all sections of road are, are the same cost. You can have, for example, in the path, you could have areas that have a lot of grade that could cost a heck of a lot more than, than just a nice flat section. So, and furthermore, to add to that, the less you do, the more the cost per square foot goes up. So if you want to do a little project to get mobilized, to get everybody out there, that's going to cost you a lot more. I see this in houses all the time. People want to build a really small house, and the cost per square foot's really high, and they can't believe it. But they build a bigger house, the cost per square foot goes down. And the reason why is you're buying more materials, you've got the mobilization already there. So I don't think it's so linear. That being the case, I think if we're going to bite off one of these projects, we need to go far enough that we see some benefit. So I want to keep, I really want to keep the path on, and I want to get creative, as Gary's suggesting, on the lower, lower section of Dogwood. Let's see what we can do to make that into a path, maybe reclaim, reclaim less, some of it for the street, carefully and safely keep cars off it, and then maybe in the future we can take more away of it and make more of a park-like environment there, but maybe that doesn't happen right away. That's two, three years down, down the road, but we've secured and we've protected people getting to the beach.
You're saying, I guess I understand this, you're saying that you want to leave the easternmost part of Dogwood alone, the way it is?
I'm open to Gary's suggestion.
Well, that's an option, is just to make it into, into a one-lane, one-lane road and a one-lane walking path, but essentially leaving that alone for right now. And going from where, in other words, build a trail from the toe of the hill where Bayberry is to the, to the bridge, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to look at all those options. So one option would be, leave it alone, re-stripe it fairly inexpensive, maybe even provide some of those silly...
But East Dog, East Dog, East Dogwood is not as, is not anywhere near as dangerous as South Dogwood.
Agreed, but we could do, we can do very inexpensively, do some, some striping there to get us up to the hill, then we're going to get, then if we could get to South Dogwood, I, I think that's probably about all we're going to be able to accomplish in this year's budget, but I want to keep it in this year's budget.
I'm not sure we can accomplish the, the trail part in this year's budget, without, without some real study, but that's, let's, let's, let's do this.
So I just want to keep it in the mix, and I want to let the engineers be creative about finding a way to do parts of it.
Then I would recommend we, we ask our town manager to take Yopon and Palmetto and Clamshell and Skyline Road, and see what that's going to cost, and then add the, as much of the trail money as you possibly can into that, and see where we come, where we come, what we can do. Is that a reasonable...
I mean, it sounds like we have some consensus. Are we, are we all kind of agreeing?
I don't think the trail's getting moved.
Well, it may not be, but, but can we all say that, I mean, let's say that every, you know, let's have the projects that Fred wants to look at in consideration, the projects that Leo wants to look at in consideration, then we can look at, put monies to them, and then set a priority base on them.
That's why I just proposed, those four projects. Peter, do you want to add something?
Yeah, just to clarify, these projects were prioritized by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee two years ago, and typically, we've been able to accomplish three to four, two, three, or four a year, some in the fall, some in the spring, when the council picks their projects and says, do them. So in essence, the reason I'm saying the bottom portion is not prioritized is because they change every year. As y'all recall, everything changes over each year, and it has changed with the CIP Committee and when its recommendations, but typically, the top handful, two, three, or four are always the priority ones because we're working with those in a budget. So yes, those are the ones I said are prioritized. Yopon Trail, we've always segmentized that into two portions, not the whole thing because of a couple of reasons. One is safety of the resident's area, the other is convenience of the resident's area. If we tore up the entire street, it's going to be a mess for probably nine months, six to eight to nine months, and it's also going to be a safety problem there, getting in and out. So it was planned as a lower half and an upper half. I want to remind counsel that Juniper Trail still has subsurface investigation to do, more to do in that section. Recall, we reported to you that the, the geotechnical engineer had already reported more, recommended more testing on that because it continues to sink in places. So I wouldn't, I would have to clarify or caution any, any consideration of doing that in portions or pieces, because he is recommending, if we take a whole look at that bottom half, and, and if that's the case, and it needs a geotechnical grid over the whole street, then that's what he would recommend. So as far as pieces of that, I'm, I'm a little bit cautious on that in making any kind of recommendation to you. The rest of them come and go. I mean, they've come and gone each year as far as priority. I've noticed tonight, y'all's discussion, and that's where they, they come up. One means something else to somebody else, and as far as prioritizing them based on condition, we went through that with the CIP Committee, and recall that some streets are traveled more heavily than others. And I would submit to the council, it's up to you if you would like us to come up with some sort of grading system that encompasses use versus condition versus time, that's great, that's what the CIP Committee did, and I would submit to you, that's probably what needs to be done town-wide with citizen involvement. But these things change at the rate of every six months, and I just want to throw that out for clarification.
And you're updating this list every six months or so? You're, you're updating this list?
We, we watch the streets, we observe them. If they're passable and they're not a threat to public safety, I don't touch this list because it just continues, we will make repairs, non-capital repairs. If they are, all of a sudden emerge as a capital need, then certainly I'm going to bring that to your attention on this list every year. That's what we've done.
Let me ask you a question. If you have to make repairs to streets, like you and two engineers and I visited a citizen's house last week, we had some flooding.
Right.
If you have to make repairs there, where, what funding is that coming from?
Street repairs?
Okay.
And you, and the budget that you've adopted? That's typical public works function, on the two, the three budgets that they administer, we pull it from those funds.
Okay, so it doesn't impact us at all?
No. No, these are capital improvements, not repairs.
I think we have $50,000, is that what it is in, in street repair? Is that the dollar amount?
Somewhere like that.
I'd have to go back and check.
Yeah, memories, it's about $50,000 each year.
One caveat to that is, we typically, on bulkhead repair, that may or may not enter into a capital project, depending on whether there's an adjacent street involved. So typically, on bulkhead repair, we've been trying to repair the bulkheads in town that haven't been tended to, but if a street's involved, we'll use some of that money sometime to repair the bulkhead as part of the capital project.
But some of these smaller projects, like, like Mark mentioned, might be something that would be not really in this budget, you say.
That's right.
It's something that we can handle.
That's right. The intersection that Mark's talked about is a typical intersection that has undermining asphalt edges all over it.
Right. And we probably have a ton of those throughout the town.
Two, back, I have a question. Back to Chris's point, you said smaller projects cost more. So instead of Phase One and Two on Yopon, would it be more cost-efficient to just do it?
Probably would be.
Instead of phase it in, you got to go break up, set up, and then go back and do it again?
I would love to do it that way. The problem is, it, it's time factor. It's going to take that length of street, it will tear it up for a certain period of time, and the residents have complained about it. You saw them tonight, they're complaining about a construction site being there now. That's what, that's what the resistance has been in the past, so we've divided it, typically divided into, but I mean, it could be done, but they would be upset, I'm sure.
Well, and also, you run into, in a town, like Yopon has very few residents, but it's a, it's a big, high-dollar street, so to Peter's point about, you know, there were highly trafficked roads, you know, there, there was a section, what was it, a very long section in here, I want to say Clamshell, it's 3,400 linear feet. You know, that, that project is going to perhaps affect more people than Yopon, and some of these other ones that are on here as aspirational things, affect more people. So it's really hard to prioritize when you have, you know, different people affected. I know the folks on Yopon, this is really important to them, but it's a lot of the budget, and so it is something to consider.
Mr. Mayor, one more point if I could.
Go ahead, Peter.
When the council talks about us giving estimates, I want to make, because this is already been brought up tonight, how it's been done historically, these streets, nobody knows what's underneath these streets, and that's what we run into, and I have been facing that ever since I became town manager. It's hard to estimate when you don't know the geotechnical condition underneath. The way this, the way the town has budgeted for these each year is through, is budgeted for a lump sum appropriation and then decided on the projects. And based on that, we've gone out and then bid it out, done the geo, excuse me, done the geotechnical and then bid it out, and only then do we know the exact cost. So when you say come up with an estimate, I would submit to you that the only way we're going to be able to do that to your satisfaction, based on what I'm hearing, is actually put it out for bid. So we can do that and bring bids back to the council, and you'll know exactly what it's going to cost, but before that, like you say, it's going to be some guesswork involved in it. And certainly bring back bids on any projects.
I was going to ask you, if you can put it out for bids, the, per, you know, the contractor would go, be doing part of that work of the geotech, so he knows what's under there so he can submit a proper bid?
All right, I'm going to get the town engineer to comment on that process because I don't want to misstate...
I'm trying to figure out how we can get through this.
I'm going to misstate it.
In order to put them out to bid, we need to have a complete construction documents. That would mean all of the engineering, all the geotechnical exploration would be done upfront. So, you know, some of these, we may be able to come back very quickly with, if you said, hey, bid these, some of them, it's going to take months for us to come back with, with the cost on because they need to be engineered.
What about like Palmetto Lane, would we have to go through something like that?
Yes.
Have you observed Palmetto by any chance?
I'm sorry?
Have you observed the Palmetto Lane issue?
Yes, they're, I'm getting crossed up today.
There's a bottom, you can bottom out on Palmetto.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with it, but is that one that we'd have to go through a geo?
Every street on this one starts off as a name street, but we have to go out and procure a survey to define the limits of the work. We get a geotechnical engineer involved to determine what's in the subsurface, and then we engineer it. So there's been some concerns over how we budget. We use a linear foot multiplier to determine an approximate cost, but then all this investigatory work and engineering work has to be done before we can then do a real engineering cost estimate based on the actual work. So it goes from a named street with a somewhat undefined problem, or an approximate linear foot, and then we go out and walk it. We walk it with staff, we walk it with, sometimes with council members, and that limit may change. We may say, we need to add another 100 feet to this road, or there's a stormwater issue here that we were not aware of before. So there's a lot of interaction between council members, residents, and staff on how we prioritize things, and then taking it and investigating it, and then turning a concept, a name, into an actual engineering project. Then we go out to bid, and we get real figures. And until we take it to bid and get that real figures, which can vary on the price of a barrel of oil, that being a large component of asphalt, so we can do our best, based on our experience, our best guess at what it's going to cost, but it doesn't become real until the contractor does the work. An example, when the water park was being built, and one of the major earthwork and paving contractors involved in that project, the bid that they turned in to do the Juniper Trail project was twice the cost of the contractor that went in, because he ballooned it up, he had so much work to do. So those things play a factor as well in what, obviously, we all start again today, how busy are all our contractors? So there's a lot of things that influence the final price. a lot of things that influence the final price at the end of the day. But there's a lot of work that has to be done between taking that, that named street and turning it into a construction document, taking it out to bid.
Yeah, I'd say, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I believe in the past, the way these things have been handled is we have some concept of cost early on, and the priorities are set, and then we work from there and we do the amount of construction that we can do. Once the priorities are set, we would like to do these roads, then we do the design, the engineering, we go and get the real costs, and then we start subtracting from that total we have. And you know, maybe at the end of it, well, we have enough money to do number five, but number four is too big. And so, we have had the flexibility to make those changes. But the priorities are decided on before real costs are put to the, to the projects, just because of the work and the time involved in creating the real costs.
And there's only so many folks who can do the work, luckily.
That's right.
So, you're kind of susceptible to the, like you said, how busy they may be at the particular moment. So, if they're awfully busy and don't need the work, you're going to pay more, and there's nothing they can do to guesstimate that because...
Basically, we got two contractors standing here, and if you look historically, one time one wins, and the next time the other guy wins. I mean, they move back and forth, and I've been involved earlier suggesting trying to find out-of-town people, and that we've done it, but nobody shows up.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I was waiting for that.
Would you like for me to?
I would like, if you don't, I am.
Then y'all can cut it up. How's this? I'd like to make a motion that we look at completing Yopon Trail, Palmetto Lane, and Clamshell, and direct the town manager to go forward on those, as well as direct the town manager to recreate a capital improvement committee to come up with a ten-year long-range plan for road improvements, or infrastructure improvements, might be a better word, to include the trail.
Okay, does it include the trail?
Well, it includes everything.
If we include the trail in this year's exploration...
No, I'm not including, my motion does not include the trail, just so, to keep Chris not from chucking it in there, Mr. Mayor.
What about?
I think it's a good idea. I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, council?
I got one question. What about Skyline?
Oh, if we have the money, Skyline would be there, Leo, but I counted up.
I'm adamant about for, there's two ones I'm adamant about.
Listening to Andy talk, knowing that we only have five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I calculated, and that's why I did the three.
Well, you were about four-something at the time.
I'm, I was about four-something, but that's not, I guess, does the engineering cost and those things come out of this pot at five seventy-five?
Yes.
So, all that's going to come out of here also, so that should make it up right where we're at.
Well, I'd like to say, one, we got to address that. Secondly, I'm also adamant about addressing this one down here.
I agree. So, that's my motion, Mr. Mayor, and I think I had a second.
Yeah, you do, right there.
So, as I understand the motion, you're proposing that we ask the town manager to go ahead and cost out Yopon Trail, Palmetto Lane, and Clamshell Trail?
Yes, sir.
Just those three?
That's all I put in there because that was, we got budgeted.
And that's all of Yopon Trail, or you want to do it south end and north end?
Well, you want to, okay.
Peter gave us a really good reason of not trying to do the whole thing one time.
Okay, then I can, then I can add in Skyline.
How about the, how about a little bit of the pack?
How about this?
Now, we're negotiating.
We're going to do Yopon, the south end.
Yes.
We're going to do Palmetto Lane, we'll do Clamshell, and add in Skyline if we have enough money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can live with that.
Will you second that motion again?
I'll second it. Yeah, that's your original plan anyway, Tom, so.
Yeah, I tried to get that going.
And that includes, that still includes the, to direct the town manager to recreate that capital improvement plan, uh, committee?
Committee.
And come up with a long-range road improvement plan ten years out?
I'm, I'm a little reluctant about the ten years out. That's a lot of councils you're all getting down.
If you're, if you're looking at this right here, obviously, we can't do them all, but that's about seven million dollars worth of...
I came up with about the same number, that Jerry came up and you came up with.
That, that I came up with on these roads.
That fourteen years, fifteen years ago.
Right. So, if we do a ten-year out, the reason I want to recreate that committee is when, when it comes to us, it'd be prioritized. And all we'll have to do is refine it.
And it can change from year to year.
Well, that's what I was about to say, is yes, put ten years together, but every year you're going to reorganize that ten years. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Sometimes you put these plans out at ten years and then they become inflexible.
Well...
Not planning.
I've been through that.
To me, to me, Leo, just so you know how I am on a plan, a plan's a living document.
Yep, I've done my share.
And once you complete that, when, you know, you just highlighted it's done, if something falls apart and you need to, if you need some, a new section or a bridge goes out because we have something, then we're going to have to reprioritize.
Yep, and that's why I'm saying...
Anything can be changed.
Well, what I'm saying is it needs to be reviewed every year.
To be reviewed annually.
Yes.
How's that?
I'll live with that.
You got that, Sheila?
Yes.
Yes, Peter?
Just to be reviewed annually.
Mr. Mayor, if I may inquire about the, some of the technical terms in the motion, I heard first, look at those streets, and then, Mr. Mayor, you said, cost out. So, staff's going to need some more definitive direction than that to be...
You're going to have to cost out.
With all due respect, do we want us to bring bids to you?
Cost in.
Because I think you heard a great discussion about what you're going to get if we don't bid it out. It's still going to be estimates that are gray area, and do you want us to bring you bids? Is the question. Is that what the motion means?
I think be more specific with that, with Gary's motion, and to say, we would need a bid price to do the south end of Yopon Trail.
Okay, and...
And once you got that, if we have the money left, do a bid price on the next one.
So, to be clear, for us to be clear, we're going to bring you back bids for each of those as they come in, because they won't come in all at the same time.
Right.
Right.
Am I right about that, Mr. Engineer?
Can you, can y'all?
I have a couple more things, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Continue to develop the plan, for suggestions you have.
We're, we're in the process of seeking a major CAMA permit for Yopon, and there's, that takes a considerable amount of time. That has to do with moving the bulkhead waterward of a standard distance, two feet. The parts of the bulkhead that were, could be replaced just by moving that two-foot waterward, which is a standard distance, those parts were repaired. The parts that have to go more waterward to open up the right-of-way for the road width, that's what the CAMA major permit is central, is based on. Those take a long time to get. My concern is that it'll be quite some time before we have an actual bid on Yopon because of that environmental permitting component of that roadway. So, you may not be able to move forward with any of the streets until that permit is awarded, and you then understand those costs. So, as you stated, it's a living document and things move around depending on, you know, these, this is one of those ancillary conditions.
So, are, let me ask you a question, Joe. Are you saying, instead of going with Yopon first because of that permit, you got, you got a timeline on that? And I know how those guys work.
It's seventy-five days for the first review, and there's an automatic seventy-five...
When's the first review?
That's, the permit's actually been, being worked on to be submitted.
So, it's not been submitted?
It has, excuse me, it has been submitted. It came back with comments, so the clock's going again.
Yeah, they stopped.
So, it's got to be revised and resubmitted?
Yes.
So, it still hadn't gone to the first phase?
It has entered the first phase and was kicked back.
Okay.
And that clock stops, that seventy-five-day clock stops.
So, are you telling me I need to do, like, Palmetto first?
I'm just saying that there needs to be some kind of contingency so that there are multiple things tracking at the same time.
In other words, you want to do things in parallel, it sounds like.
I think that would be best so that you're given information that you can act on versus something getting, you know, being a stop log.
Exactly.
That's, I just wanted to point that out.
So, we're looking at Palmetto not occurring until...
Well, Palmetto, to give you an update, there's, we have a survey or contracted to collect the survey data on Palmetto. So, we already have the survey data on Yopon, so, and we have some preliminary work done on that. So, that is already tracking forward, but the CAMA permit's going to take some time. So, we'll be working on Palmetto and doing actual construction drawings on that roadway so we can take that one out to bid. But you may end up, because you're waiting for the CAMA major permit on Yopon, you may decide to move forward on Palmetto. So, I think parallel tracks are probably the best way for you guys to make effective, implement capital improvements.
We still leave those same four streets in the mix, though.
Well...
We'll still do the same.
We always see, I've acted in this role for seventeen years, and we've had different types of capital improvement plans, and we always get, like, tonight, we introduced a project that was an old project. Mr. Huffman brought up a drainage improvement along Trinity. We did a major drainage improvement along Chickahaw that was very successful. It cured, it remedied a pretty bad situation. We stubbed out some pipes going towards Trinity to extend that in a second phase. But over time, we have periods of drought, people don't complain as much, and sometimes projects get moved around. And the priority to do that second phase fell away. The first phase, Chickahaw, was four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to extend that perforated pipe on Chickahaw Trail. So, in order, you know, there's a new project that was introduced tonight that's not even on the list, and that's how things get introduced to the list and then become a priority because someone voices a concern. So, there's another project here where we already have some infrastructure in place that we could investigate, take out to bid. It's probably a several hundred thousand dollar project. So, it's things that you all have to consider. The CIP committee, I personally always felt was an effective tool to discuss prioritization based on use of the road, based on resident input, based on the ITRE report, based on the street committee's evaluation of roads, based on our staff observations. So, it's always going to be something we need to visit and revisit every six months, every three months, whatever. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
So, where are we?
We have a motion on the floor, which we haven't, which we haven't discounted. We can modify it some though, if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Now, clarification on the recreation of the CIP committee by the town manager. Is that the intent of the council for the town manager to have his own CIP committee, or does the, is it the intent and direction of the council to appoint a CIP committee? Because recall, that was in the rules of procedure before, a description of the committee. Whatever the council wants to do, and I just heard the word recreate, town manager recreate. I want to make sure that's what you want to do.
Well, the original committee, as I recall, was, was involved, the town manager, the town engineer, public works director, and two members of council, and one, two representatives from the community, two, two individual reps. Can we recreate that same committee?
Exactly. If that's the pleasure of the council, we'll do whatever. If you want to reinstate the previous rule.
I'd recreate it, what we had.
Exactly what it was before.
Yeah, I think it's, the mix I gave you, I think was pretty close. I mean...
I just need that direction from the council.
Right. Are you, are you okay with that? It's part of your, it's part of your motion, Gary?
Yes, that it would be just like the last, like it was in our rules of procedure.
Two heads are right.
Two council members, staff, two community members.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Wasn't the, wasn't the chief of police there too?
The staff, the staff came anyway. We will recreate the exact, or just reinstate the exact same rule that was in place before. That's what the intent is.
Yeah, I think that'll work.
Good?
Yeah.
We got it.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, it's been modified a couple times. We all sure what it is now?
Yeah, I think so.
You want, you want to hear it back one more time?
Um, because they did a, they did a parallel, and you might have to tell me how, what did I say? I wrote it down. Make a motion that we, is it cost out?
No, we want to make, to get...
Secure bids.
Secure bids.
Secure bids. On Yopon Trail, south end, Palmetto Lane, Clamshell, and Skyline.
Skyline.
Skyline and the Highway twelve intersection.
And that's it.
As monies allow us to, as far as we can go. And the second part was in, direct the town manager to recreate a capital improvement committee to come up with a long-range plan for road improvements, a ten-year...
Yeah, we defined that long range as ten years.
Long-range plan, a ten-year long-range plan for road improvement.
To be reviewed annually.
To be reviewed annually.
Hate to keep doing this, but just a clarification.
Is that not good?
On the Clamshell Trail project, I believe you heard the town engineer state that that did not include south of Chickahaw for the stormwater management. Does council not want to include that as part of the bid process? Because we could easily include that portion that the neighbors have spoke about tonight in that and just see what it would cost as a separate part of the bid.
It says here, Peter, on the, on the, on the schedule, include nearby stormwater improvement for Trinity Trail. Is that not it?
Well, Andy stood up and clarified that. Andy, you want to stand up again and talk to him about that?
I, I just, I'm sorry. My clarification was that the drainage problem that we were discussing here on Trinity Trail is not part of Clamshell. It's not on this list. And so, I was just doing a point of order that if you thought you were addressing that by including Clamshell, you're not.
You're not. So, we got to address that as a separate...
We need, we need to address that issue.
Can we do that in the road repair budget or the streets budget? Is that my major?
They don't have no money to do that. There's no way.
No, they weren't covered. We've got fifty-seven thousand budgeted in there.
It's not on the list.
No, no, I was hoping it was more minor.
The, that's not on this list.
Yeah, I know it's not.
And I'm not saying it's not important, but what we, what we did was a public hearing on this list plus, well, what's on here, and buttoned on that.
Yeah, but they...
And that would be a different business item.
It was bought up, so I think we ought to have some idea what it was, it's going to take to do it. That's my thought.
I'm going to agree with you. I mean, maybe let's get through this one, and then I know...
Because we got another one to do.
Yeah, and...
We can, we can tax, we can tax our town manager with engineer to come up with an estimate to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to...
Even not a formal bid. At least get an estimate to do that particular work. Is that all right to add that in there or not?
I wouldn't, I don't want that added in on this because it's not on the list.
All right. Just take your, your motion, take out Clamshell.
No, Clamshell's not doing that.
Do you want to leave Clamshell in there?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, I just heard Skyline Road to be closed by the police.
Okay, on Skyline, huh?
Yeah.
Might be, it might be a fire or something.
Is it?
We just heard the Skyline, Skyline Road had been closed by the police. We don't know why, but that's what we just advised by one of our residents.
On Facebook, they're stating that there was somebody who had been over at their house.
Okay, this, so now, now we know why Skyline's closed.
I didn't know where, but it's Skyline.
Well, I understand that the accident is on Spindra because police considerations that closed Skyline Road as well.
Safety considerations, right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a clarification.
We have verification.
You've got your, Peter, you have your questions answered?
We are not to include anything south of Chickahaw as part of the Clamshell project, is what I'm hearing.
Right. That'll be a separate, separate estimate we'll get from the engineer.
So, should we call the matter to vote?
I'm getting ready to, Chris. We have a motion, it's been, it's been seconded and been discussed. All in favor of going ahead with directions to our town manager to do what we said and to get bids to these, these streets that are on this list. Yopon, Juniper Trail South End, Yopon Trail South End, Juniper Trail, Palmetto Lane, and Clamshell Trail.
Well, you said Juniper.
Sorry about that. I said Palmetto Lane. Apologize.
Thank you, Clark has it.
I've been here a long time, guys. You got it, Sheila?
I sure do.
Thank you.
You've not, she'll call us for clarification.
All, all in favor of the, of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Well, I'd, I'd like to follow up with a final motion, which should be pretty easy.
All right.
I'd like council to direct the town manager to approach the tourist bureau and prepare, prepare for assistance grants, knowing that they're not, that's not happening right now, but getting everything ready for a future path so that when grants are opened up, hopefully, and there's money available, we are...
and there's money available, we are prepared and that we're, we can begin to maybe get, get some of that information. And then furthermore, I'd like to ask the town manager to continue planning some of the options that Gary brought up to save costs on at least this first phase of a path. Even though we won't go out to bid, we can at least continue the development of the plans so that if this tourist bureau money should come in and/or we have extra money, we could begin to implement that.
One thing you got to remember on the tourism bureau grants, they're performance-based. We would have to do the work and have all the invoices paid before they will reimburse you for their, and it's normally a 50%.
Understood, but, but if they came, if we saw that the project was 300 or 200, let's say, and then we might find, we could use other funds for it if we knew we had some matching funds.
Yeah, that, well, if it get approved, you would know what you're going to have up front, but you don't get any money until you're done.
Is the intent to authorize the town manager to apply for a grant, period?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we clarify that.
Which you can't do unless we have a plant, a project.
We can do it based on the design.
Yeah, based on that, based on that.
That you've already authorized.
You've got the plan, we have the plans and we have an estimate.
Let's see what happens.
Yep.
And just work with Diane and.
Timing wise.
Well, you know who to work with.
Yes.
So, we got that?
Because it'll eventually.
You didn't vote, you didn't motion for us to do that?
I did. I think he made the motion.
All right, you got a motion. Second to Chris's motion.
Second.
Any further discussion of that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's made and carried. Okay, Peter. You have any other questions, Peter?
It's already closed.
Go to the next one.
Yep, it's already closed.
You got your budget amendment in there first.
Now, we're moving forward to the public hearing on the ZTA 1701 zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend section 36-132(c) of the Southern Shores Town Council to establish residential accessory structures existing as of January 1, 2017, which were otherwise lawful and duly permitted at the time of their construction or modification, and which are nonconforming due solely to the inclusion of living space within the accessory structures legally nonconforming. I'll open the hearing by having Mr. Haskett provide a presentation and then once he's had his presentation, I'll go through the list and then I'll ask if anyone else has any comments. Mr. Haskett.
Did you get a chance to stretch?
Yes, sir. Thank you and good evening again, Mayor, members of the council. I've got a little bit of a scratchy throat, so I'll try not to clear it in the microphone. The application before you tonight is ZTA-1701 and town staff is proposing this amendment to amend section 36-132(c) of the town zoning ordinance to establish residential accessory structures existing as of January 1, 2017, which are otherwise lawful and duly permitted at the time of their construction or modification, and which are nonconforming due solely to the inclusion of living space within the accessory structure as legally nonconforming. Secondly, town staff is proposing to amend section 16-58 to establish residential accessory structures existing as of January 1, 2017, which were otherwise lawful and duly permitted at the time of their construction or modification, and which are nonconforming due solely to the inclusion of working, sleeping, living, cooking, or restroom space within the accessory structure as legally nonconforming, as long as all such work, or all such working, sleeping, living, cooking, or restroom space is located above regulatory flood protection elevation. The request is a result of the fact that over the years, proposed accessory structures with living space have received permits and certificates of compliance or certificates of occupancy, all along while the town zoning ordinance and flood damage prevention ordinance prohibited accessory structures from containing living space. By adopting the proposed amendments to section 36-132(c), all accessory structures containing living space which received permits prior to January 1, 2017 will become legally nonconforming with respect to the town zoning ordinance. By adopting the proposed amendments to section 16-58, all accessory structures within a special flood hazard area which received permits prior to January 1, 2017, and contain working, sleeping, living, cooking, or restroom space will become legally nonconforming with respect to the town's flood damage prevention ordinance. The town's currently adopted land use plan contains the following goal and policy, excuse me, policy that applies to this proposed amendment, and that is policy number two, that the community values in the town will continue to comply with the founder's original vision, vision of Southern Shores, a low-density residential community comprised of single-family dwellings on large lots served by a small commercial district for convenience shopping and services located at the southern end of the town. This blueprint for land use normally protects environmental resources and fragile areas by limiting development and growth. As noted by Chairperson Williams earlier this evening, town staff and the planning board both concurred that the ZTA is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan, and the planning board unanimously recommended approval of the application 5-0 at their last meeting in June. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Haskett. Does anybody on this council have any questions for Mr. Haskett?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Let me, wait a minute. I have a question on that. Just, the reason we're looking at this is because we have the flood damage prevent, prevention ordinance that does not allow.
It's the zoning ordinance and the flood damage prevention ordinance that does not allow that, correct?
Both of them disallow it. Both of them disallow it, so there's, that's why there's two changes. The first one is, the part one is to the zoning ordinance portion and part two is to the flood ordinance portion.
Section 136-132(c) and section 16-58.
Okay, I still, okay. I just don't understand, if this has been on the books, why we've been allowed, why it's allowed.
Right, well, now we have stopped allowing them, therefore, the ones that were previously permitted, they were requesting that they be declared legally nonconforming.
I understand that.
They were, they were mistakenly allowed is why they were allowed in the past.
By our planning department.
By some, by someone at some point, you know, we don't have a list of every structure and who everyone was.
We were, we were giving out permits and occupancy permits and I just, okay.
It all happened, but that's all water over the day. We can't, we can't change that. We can, we can protect these people.
I know we can't change it, but it does not look good for us.
I'll note that it does go back to.
This is why we're correcting it.
I will note that this does go back at least to the 1980s. It's not just recent. This goes back over 20 years.
Mr. Nathan.
About how many structures have you identified?
I do not have a number for that. I would say, I'd hate to put a number on it, but it's not substantial.
Okay.
So, thank you. So, let me ask a question, Wes. Like, say their house burns down. God forbid, but say something happens to that property that's nonconforming. We grandfather it in. Can they rebuild it like it's, like it is, like it stands today?
You mean if they have a, a single-family dwelling in a detached structure that has an accessory structure that has living space?
Right.
Currently, since the illegal structure or the structure was permitted, if it were to burn down, and Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, we would not be able to allow it because it is illegally nonconforming.
If you pass this, you will.
If you pass this.
I'm hesitant to say you will in all circumstances. You got to look at the nonconformity rules every time and see what you do, but that's the general concept of making it legally nonconforming. Right now, it's nonconforming. Nonconforming means it doesn't comply with the ordinance, but it's illegally nonconforming. You almost never can rebuild illegally nonconforming, but the concept of making it legally nonconforming makes it so that you can continue it as it is until you make, you may have a 50% rule in one or the other provisions of your ordinance that if someone updates a house a certain way, that they've got to change that. It may kick in at that point where you have to change it, but otherwise, generally, the concept is by making it legally nonconforming, they can continue to use it as it is and replace it consistent with the, whatever the nonconformity rules say on their face. You have.
That's a good legal.
Well, I can tell you that.
That's what he has to use.
Dealing with.
Okay, say Matthew comes on, blows my roof off of my nonconforming house.
I'd have to look at camera rules, the flood ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and somebody would have to look at the building code to determine, each one of them's going to have a different rule about how, how much damage and how the damage is caused, and every town does it a little bit different. All I'm telling you is the general concept of nonconformities is that if it's legally nonconforming, you can continue to use it and you can replace it, but there are boundaries to that on occasion, and you have to look at each occasion to determine the complete answer.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. Yeah. Mr. Martin.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff. Mark Martin, 191 Wax Myrtle. I'm a builder in town, been here for almost 21 years now. Had a little bit of knowledge with this over the years because I think I've been on the wrong end of the stick all three times, so I've got, back to Gary, a couple of questions that, you know, you had, and maybe I can answer them a little bit. I want to say back in 97, 98, there was a house proposed on the oceanfront, at least this is when I first became aware of things. They were going to do a detached garage with a studio above it, year-round home. Lady was an artist, she wanted to paint there. Brought it up to the town council, they said, "We cannot have living space in an accessory structure." An accessory structure at that time meant detached, so this was out in the front of the yard. So, we got rid of that. New council, new planning department, whole new, everybody comes in. Then we started in with language that said it had to be, if you had heated space over an accessory structure, it had to be attached. The definition, that's, this is where the problem became in, attached. It didn't say it had to be attached by decks or heated space, just attached. Half the town thought heated space. I thought heated space. My neighbor called me up and said, "Hey, I want to do a little pool house with a bedroom up here and I want to attach it with a deck." I came to the town, previous planning department, "You cannot do that." Two years later, guy's building it. Wait a minute, you told me I can't do that. Oh, well now, it's an interpretation as to what is the definition of attached. Is it heated space or not heated space? So, when staff has gotten involved with it now, I mean, when they walked in, as far as I know, I mean, none of us knew that the language was in there in the zoning ordinance or the flood zone. This is the first I've heard of the flood ordinance was tonight. So, what sparked all of that debate was they were issuing permits based off what had been done from previous planning departments and that interpretation. That's where we are now. So, then I think the conversation sparked again with the 6,000 square feet house. Last year, all of it came up. So, last year, August, couple down the street from me, "Hey, I want to build a garage. I want to put a room above it because I finished furniture and stuff and I want to have a place to keep it." And the only way to put this on it is, I mean, if, if the house is four, if the lot is four quadrants, you've got the one here for the driveway, you've got the house here, you've got the septic here, and you've got the driveway parking here. We wanted to basically take the two boxes and do that and connect it with a deck. Drew it, three grand to the architect to draw it, health department approval, ARB approval, took it to the town, can't accept it because, back to the 6,000 square foot deal and what was supposedly happening and I guess where the attorney and Peter and everybody found this document, wherever it was buried in the zoning manual that I think no one of us has ever really seen and gone through completely. So, that's where we are today. The couple that I was going to do the project for, you know, they've been kind of waiting to see how this thing shakes out and, you know, they basically took a $150,000 project and spent 20 grand and closed the lower level and didn't do the garage, and I doubt that they'll do it now. They may, may not if something ever changes. So, and the language that's out there now is, doesn't make that distinguish, distinction between heated and unheated space. You can probably poll, you know, 1,000 different communities and you're going to find it three different ways. Heated connection, deck connection, or unheated connection, or a completely detached accessory structure, because that's what everybody's looking at, is if it's completely detached, you can't have heated space. If it's attached, you could. So, I think that's part of what you've got to come up with now. But there's a lot of homes in town built probably last six, seven, eight years, even longer, that we're collecting a lot of tax base off of that are illegal, were illegal, now nonconforming structures, and that's a big problem when you go to refinance, fix up, repair, those types of things in it. Burn down, rebuild. So, you know, to me, the thing to do is to go ahead and approve this, grandfather everybody in here right now, and then basically make them legal, that if you attach it with a deck, you have a legal structure. I don't know if that can be retroactively done, but you can speak to that later. So, I mean, that seems to be the sensible thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Garrett.
We're the same height. Mr. Mayor, councilman, thank you. I'm going to agree with everything Mark said and I can't add a lot to it, I'm not going to be redundant, but you need to pass this tonight. You need to protect the people who have these existing nonconformities and make them legal and not just illegal nonconformities, but it's only the first step. I appreciate what the town attorney said earlier. We need to keep going and make these, these units legal, make, and make it a legal way of building. Right now, I have four houses I'm building and three of them have accessory apartments, not even apartments, accessory rooms above the garage, bonus rooms. Three, two of those three are retired. They're going to use them for computer rooms, home theaters, and rehab centers. They got their exercise equipment up there. It's a good use of space. Almost everybody's looking at it, so make this tonight just the first step and then let's go to the next step and permit them in Southern Shores. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Is anyone else who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Mr. Darling.
I was going to say that in the real estate world, if the connection from the accessory structure to the house is done through a heated connection, then the real estate and the square footage of the real estate is combined. If you don't have a heated connection, that accessory structure and the main house are not combined and the definition of the heated square footage is on the house alone. So, I think one should be a little bit careful about how we define the accessory structure square footage because it should be included in the 6,000 square foot limitation, as I understand that was your intention originally. Legally nonconforming, I certainly think that's very reasonable to grandfather people in, but Wes just said, we don't know who those are, and I think it should be by application. You should be able to just apply to the town and say, "Look, I have a legally nonconforming structure," and get grandfathered in, that's fine. But if you don't apply, it's not legally nonconforming. That's just one suggestion because you should know how many people are doing that. And the other thing I would suggest that you seriously consider is to exclude cooking facilities in the accessory structure because then you turn the house, the property into a multifunction, multi-house, sorry, multi-family property. And it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that Southern Shores does not allow multifamily structures in the town. I don't know. That was my understanding, but.
We have them.
Yeah, well, you shouldn't encourage them perhaps. Anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darling. Does anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anybody else, but I will point out one, one issue on what Mr. Darling said about having people come in. The way this typically works is you pass an ordinance that makes these houses legally nonconforming. The way this typically works is you pass an ordinance that makes these houses legally non-conforming. And then when someone comes in to apply for a permit, they're gonna have to show that they had permits when they got the structure, when they did the stuff. What this doesn't allow is someone who went and did the work to their accessory structure without telling anybody, without getting permits. Those people will remain illegally non-conforming. And from my perspective, and I'm sure from Mr. Martin's perspective, probably Mr. Darling, Mr. Garrity, you see both ends of that all across the county and every municipality all the time. There, there are things that pop up where people do things to their property and there are things that pop up where changes in ordinances over time and changes in planning departments over time create complexities that are unforeseen at the time that they first arise. But this is, as I mentioned before, outside of the public hearing. This is just the first step that at some point in the near future, we'll go through the planning board and bring multiple different choices back to you. Probably, again, where the real, where the real understanding problem was for this was distinguishing between dwelling units, as Mr. Darling was talking about, which are, have stoves and the complete ability to live versus heated square footage that doesn't have that. And I think the plan is to distinguish between that and potentially keep the status quo is another choice. And then how you deal with, if you don't want to keep the status quo and say no, then how do you deal with the, the square footage up there? Is it separate square footage? Does it go to the six thousand square feet? And I think that there's multiple different ways to look at that, and there's gonna be multiple different ideas on the council about that. So my plan is to put together multiple concepts where you look at, let you beat me up a fair amount about it, and then let me change it a little bit and see if the, the next round is something that, that everybody can live with or at least three out of five of you. So, that would, I would close the public hearing now and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to give us a motion if you can consider it, Ben?
I would, it would just be a motion to adopt the ZTA seventeen dash oh-one as presented.
Do you have a second, council?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Was that your question?
No, I asked, I asked him to give me, give me a motion.
To make it for you?
Yeah, sure.
Good. There you go. I'm good with that.
That's what I, that's what I-
Come on, let's move on here.
I have a second matter. I asked for a second.
We're gonna pass on all that. Yeah, I second it.
I asked for discuss, for discussion. Any further discussion?
I think, I would like to say, and I think Andrew said about cooking. You know, I know we have a, in Chickahaw, you can't have a stove in that, in some other areas.
And that's all part of the covenant there.
But then today, today, I mean, you gotta think outside because today I can get a stove top and set it on a counter and plug it in the wall and cook on it. A little portable thing that is almost like a stove, and you can get microwaves. And when we say that, one of the things would be enforcement. I don't know that we got enough people to go around and look at those, but as they do, it's very easy to change those things afterwards and remove them. So that's gonna be a hard thing to deal with. So I don't know if we need to get into-
That's a future, not on this particular one here.
I think it would just prohibit dwelling units about, and then dwelling units have a definition in the ordinance already.
Well, some people use it for putting their kid out there, be out of the house.
But I think the definition of dwelling unit separates it for someone to live there so that you could lease that facility to someone who's not in your family. And that's, I think that was the original intent of the ordinance.
I think that's probably the way we need to go is to lease.
Well, that's future. Let's address this one.
Also, keep in mind, we had a fellow came not, a meeting or two ago, and he had said his son owned a piece of property and he, you know, he's older, he's getting older, and he'd like to stay there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was Vince Ferretti and-
That's correct. So, let's deal with that later, like you said.
Let's deal with this.
I've got a motion on the floor, council, to approve ZTA seventeen zero-one. Zoning text number seventeen zero-one. It's been seconded. We discussed it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I'd call for the mo, for the-
Come, bud.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's made and carried. Item C. Budget amendments and projects approved, budgeted contracts encumbered in fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, yet, not yet, or it's not yet, yet not spent, roll over to fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. Peter, do you want to address this for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, these were placed on your new business agenda because you've had discussion on at least one of these items. Typically, balancing amendments are placed on the consent agenda, but since you all have had discussion on at least of each nourishment, I thought we'd put it on new business in case there are any further questions. First of all, before I begin, under little double I, there's a typo on the last line. It's corresponding revenue should be five hundred thousand. So there's one more zero that's missing in that typo. It's not in the budget amendment itself, but it's in this last line of little double I paragraph. These are matters that are already obligated, that were obligated for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen. And we discuss these with the auditor each year and reveal those to her that they're obligated. And any money that's been unspent had reverted back to undesigned, unassigned fund balance. And so what the effect of these amendments does is reallocate back out of unassigned fund balance that they reverted to on June thirtieth. So, the first one is the same thing that council did last year, is, is reallocate, reverted unspent money for the code right obligation. That's for forty-four thousand, four sixty-seven. Again, that comes out of the fund balance. It went into fund balance on midnight, June thirtieth, and now you're pulling it back out to meet the obligation under that contract. The second one is the beach nourishment commitment to Derrick County under the agreement that's entered into with Derrick County. We call that as a one million dollar commitment. Five hundred thousand dollars by the town, five hundred thousand dollars by the county. Three hundred and fifty thousand of the town's five hundred thousand is, was budgeted last year from unassigned fund balance on June thirtieth. It rolled right back into unassigned fund balance. So what this does, it pulls it back out of unassigned fund balance. So the, the total budget amendment in that case is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to meet the county contract obligation. I will note to you there that initially, that we sat down with the auditor the last, or discussed it with the last auditor the last week of June, the county's contract is not a reimbursement contract. Basically, the, the town is paying its portion to the county. So we don't receive actual funds from the county, but the auditor advised it to be booked that way as revenue. That's why it was initially not done that way in the budget. Number three is, budget amendment number three is for four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for street improvement projects that were wrapping up. Again, that amount reverted to fund balance, and now this budget amendment does is pulls it back out of the fund balance after midnight, June thirtieth, and pays for those obligations. There are two more that were not ready by the time the agenda was developed. One would be the landscaping for the Stormwater Project at NC twelve. That'll be coming to you in August, and that'll come out of the same money that was reverted June thirtieth. And also, there's some police supplies that were obligated prior to June thirtieth as well under the previous budget, and that'll be coming to you. Those two were not ready by the time we developed the agenda. But again, these are balancing amendments utilizing the unassigned fund balance that had been replenished as of midnight, June thirtieth. I'll be glad to try to answer questions to anybody.
Be sure I understand. This money's coming back out of the unassigned-
Yes.
So, it was three, three million, seven sixty-one, four eighty-one, June thirtieth. So now, this will come out and it'll be below three million. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, the question, your question is, again, there was three, the balance we gave you was, as of June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, not as of seventeen.
Oh.
Sixteen.
I can't give you, I cannot give you a figure as of midnight, June thirtieth. That's the auditor's job, and she'll be doing that. There's so many transactions that occur in a second.
So this was budgeted money?
Yes.
Which, which on bills that we owe-
That is obligated.
That goes, you need to transition to the, you need to go to the unassigned fund balance temporarily to the new budget this year.
That's correct.
So we don't know what the unassigned-
You won't know that until the auditor comes with her report this fall. Yes, sir?
It's gonna go up by this amount and it's gonna go down by this amount.
Right.
And Fred, the reason for that, let me add, the reason that we don't know is because we still have two months' worth of occupancy and sales tax to record as receivables. And then I also have some payables that I have to book back against last year, so that's why we don't know what that number is.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion?
Yes.
I need a motion to, go ahead.
I move that we approve these budget amendments.
Second.
Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's made and approved. General public comment? Anybody else who wants to say?
Your end.
I think I'll get, and I heard you answer my question in some sense, if you've got time.
Thank you, Al.
I was gonna discuss the traffic. I'm gonna wait until August.
Tommy already discussed the traffic. Memorial weekend was bad and Fourth of July weekend was real bad, real bad. No, no, no further comment from the public, other business? The only thing I have, gentlemen, to share with you is a, the only I have to share with you is a, a thank you, I want to thank you and members of the council for your ser, for your services to the community. I'm looking forward to meeting with you and serving all of you, and all of our children in Derrick County. Take care, John Furelli, the new student attendant of schools. That was to our council. I sent you the other, my email. Counsel, Gary, you have anything? You want to start your end?
We're, Ben's bringing us the zoning options in August.
They're gonna go to the planning board first.
Planning board gets them four weeks.
Can we, can we whittle them down first? Or does that just happen in time?
Well, if you remember, my plan was to let the planning board try and whittle them down because if you remember how much fun and excitement you had when I brought you three ordinances related to the large-
We had a lot of fun.
Structures. My, my, my thought at that point was that you probably didn't want to do that again, but I can, I can bring it to you before it goes to the planning board if you want.
I don't see that.
And I understand, but Sam and that planning board are doing that code rewrite right now.
Yeah, we don't want to take away from that.
And I was just wondering, and Sam's still here, and thank you for being here. You rather us whittle it down or you want to get them first?
Move them left.
Can you hear me now? You want us to, you want us to deal with them first and then bring them to you?
I'd like to have the planning board review something that is, you know, somewhat final, if you will. In fact, if we have to review every draft that comes through and then it gets rechecked and the comments we have, it takes a lot of time.
So let's, can we get, I'd like to see all the options first.
Or can you see the options, but still send them?
I'll bring you the options in August and you can tell me what points we'll take.
Then we can, then we can give Sam a couple to choose from, to guide us on.
Is everybody in favor of that, seeing the options here first or going to planning board first? Which, you want to see the options first or have them go to planning board is the question, and that's just, that's not a vote necessarily. That's what your thoughts are.
I'd like to see them, yeah.
Yeah, we might, no?
I'll try and put them together.
Yeah.
Send them out, do email.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if I'll be able to get them done before the meeting.
You don't have to quit going to the beach every day.
I'll send them out, do email.
Soon as you get them ready.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get them to you as soon as I can.
We're hoping you get them ready.
And if you have any thoughts that you know how you already want to do it, feel free to email me and I'll, you know, if I get five people who email me that this is the way they want to do it, I'll say, "Great, I can skip the other four ways."
That dog didn't go hunting.
I didn't think so, but I put it out there.
Chris, anything else?
No.
Fred?
Fred, anything else?
Yeah, just one general comment. I think tonight was a good example, going through that CIP list of need for more and more planning, and I think Gary's motion directing the town manager to develop a ten-year plan is a good idea, and the more we can do, the better. And my next comment is we've really got to do something about the traffic going through the South Dogwood Trail and over into the rest of the Dunes area. People are really getting fed up. It's, it's really a problem. So we're very anxious to wait until August to hear what you got to present us, Peter.
I appreciate that. Again, I will qualify that. I don't think I'm gonna send you, bring, bringing you anything new. I think y'all know what the challenge is and what the, what the options are now, but we'll, we'll quantify them for you.
They do have those, they have those, like, they look like potholes. They're made of rubber.
We tried one of those one time, yeah.
Until somebody goes into somebody's car to avoid it.
The only thing I got from tourism board, our attorney, Dwight Wheeler, so I don't know if any of you knew, knew him or not, passed away. His funeral was last, last Thursday. Interesting individual. He was actually involved with the Civil Air Patrol and one time he was, his rank was major general and what a, what a group showed up for his ceremony, the young cadets there, and it was very, very, but he was a very, actually, I didn't realize how talented that he was. So we're gonna miss him.
Thank you, Bill. No further business. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.